Oh, there we go. Okay, we are ready to begin. Welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here tonight at our city council meeting of April 13th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM right now and all council members are in attendance. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Albert. And then we have the great honor and privilege of hearing from a special guest, Rajan Zed, President of the University Society of Hinduism, who will give our invocation. Councilwoman Albert.
Please stand for the pledge and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, infinite, and ever changing.
My hearty thanks to Mayor Joe Blom, council members, Mandel Larson for scheduling me to read invocation for the great city of South Weaver. I shall be reading in Sanskrit from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE, and then interpret in English. May all rise, please. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvahat Tatsavitharvaranayam Bhargo Devastidhimahi Dio Yona Prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamya Tamso Ma Jyotirgamya Mriti Or Mamratham Gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada Saktastatham Karyam Karma Samachara Sakto Haya Charan Karma Parma Banoti Purusha Karma Nevahi Samshiddi Mastita Jankadeya Lokasangreha Me Vapi Sampashankar Thumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahana Obnaktu Sahaviren Karbabhai Jaspina Vadi Tamastu Ma Vidh Vissabhai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Kuti Samna Hrdhyaniva Samnamastu Vomano Jethava Susa Hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquer. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Zed. That was beautiful. We appreciate your attendance here tonight and your participation. Thank you so much.
Appreciate having me. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Let's move on to our public comment. Please state your name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Address the entire council and know that we will not be responding during the public comment period. We're now open for public comment.
Chair George, 7825 South 2000 East, South Weaver. Purely elected, quote, "The United States Constitution contains at least five divinely inspired principles versus the principle that the source of government power is the people." Given last Easter from President Donald H. Oaks from defending our divinely inspired Constitution law. "We as humans are meant to govern ourselves to the maximum extent possible and with as little government law as possible." "We the people" is one of my favorite sayings. "You wonderful people were elected by 'we the people' to do what is best for 'we the people,' not me the TG, not you the individual, and especially not they, the developers. We the people gathered in South Weaver and gave much detailed input to the general plan. As you get ready to discuss the pole gateway development and hashed overlay of that property and others, I ask you all to take the time to go back over all the general plan data, review both surveys results, and read every comment made by the people of South Weaver. Their collective voice is what you should honor as you make the decision moving forward, not your own desires, not the desires of the developers or any individuals, but the collective desires of we the people of South Weaver. My memory of those general plan inputs brings me to points. One, the people of South Weaver want the pole gateway development to be commercial highway. Two, the people of South Weaver don't want any residential on that development. Therefore, those two things should be respected and met as you discuss this development. The hashed overlay was of good intention, and had it been executed with the two points above, it might have held merit. However, we quickly saw how a single desire to make something cohesive also led to a starting point to staff and developer that includes 75 residential units along with commercial. I request that the hashed overlay go away until we can get more clearly defined codes, zoning, etc., that are truly ironclad versus open-ended. Because when it comes to codes and zoning being open-ended, the city and the citizens always lose. Lastly, I ask that our city's agenda and our city's webpage regarding marks of social distancing, etc., be changed to one simple thing. This is a quote that I would recommend we print. "In accordance with the current state COVID-19 mandate, masks will only be required if a public gathering exceeds 50 people and social distancing cannot be maintained. We respect the rights and freedoms of all people. We ask that you all respect each other's rights and honor those who choose to wear a mask as well as those who choose not to wear a mask. That represents America much better than the virtual city. Attendees are encouraged to wear a mask. Not a private business. None of you are my mom." So to close, I'd like to use another quote from President Donald H. Oaks on Easter Sunday about our great Constitution. Quote, "God has given his children moral agency, the power to decide and to act. The most desirable condition for the exercise of that agency is maximum freedom for men and women to act according to their individual choices." Close quote. Thank you.
Thanks, T G.
Lisa, will you check and see if that mic's on?
Nope.
Thank you.
I think T G has a lot of voice.
We could hear you.
Corinne Johnson, 8020 South, 2500 East, South Weaver. So if there's something that I've observed and acknowledged over the last almost two years being involved in the city government and watching things happen on a broader scale in the United States in COVID is that things work so much better when the roles of government and the lanes of government and those things are all kind of in order. And things follow the processes and the rules and the things that are laid out, and everyone kind of stays in their lane. And I see that in our city, too. Everyone has a lane. Everyone has a role. We have our, you know, our city council and our mayor. We have staff. We have a planning commission, and we also have the citizens in the city. And it seems when everyone kind of stays in their lane and follows their roles and does the things that they're supposed to do, it's outlined in our city codes and in our city documents and our guiding documents of our city, things really go a lot better and things stay in balance a lot. And as citizens, we've kind of learned that. There's places for us to speak out. There's things we shouldn't shouldn't do. And we are really trying to take advantage of the opportunities where it's expressly shown. General plan, public hearings, those are our opportunities to really speak out and hear and public comment. And so, you know, I've noticed that it really does help. And when things get out of balance in the city and things and roles aren't defined and there's power struggles and there's lots of issues and things aren't balanced and things don't go well. And that's kind of what we've seen. We've seen it with the lofts. We've seen it with the RV park. We've seen it with the issues. And, you know, it also includes developers in this process, too, and landowners in the city as well. And so I've been thinking a lot about that. And it comes to the reality that, you know, what really is out of balance here with this crosshatch and with this problem with this general plan is that it just gives too much legislative power to a city council, any city council in any city. And it creates an imbalance in this whole process. City councils aren't designed to be developers. You aren't designed to be the planning commission to make wide sweeping legislative decisions. It's going to lead to imbalance and problems in the city. And that's why all of a sudden now the citizens and everybody's struggling to figure out what they're supposed to do because no one has their lane. No one knows what their role is, where the boundaries are. And this goes back to just missing this in the general plan. And I think it's something we can fix. I think it's a balance that can be restored in our city to bring things back into alignment. And my proposal along the lines of T G's is this idea that we can remove the crosshatch completely because then we are following very clear zoning codes that have been outlined in the processes and everything flows the way it's supposed to. We have our developer who works with staff. They go through the process with the planning commission. It comes to the city council. Everything's defined. We know what we're doing. And that would be a suggestion that I have, that we just remove the crosshatches from the general plan. If that's not a possibility, then we need to do more in the general plan to give limits to the city council and what they can and cannot legislate as they act, in a sense, as developers for the city in that legislative process. So some of the recommendations I would have would be to, first, to make sure that, let me get my notes here. Residential zones may only be applied to residential areas, and they may not exceed the highest density zone in the city, that the planning commission has a clear review and recommendation process and a role that's clearly defined in this. And that also public hearings, they're clearly defined when and how every public hearing happens through this process of development with a crosshatch. Also that the development agreement may not be discussed in private committee meetings with city council members or any elected officials in the city with the developer and staff. And that there'll also be a two-thirds majority vote required on the development agreement. This last one is very, very important because these are legislative decisions over a development. There needs to be more than just three council members. You need to have a clear two-thirds majority to make sure that it reflects and fits the vision of the entire elected body, most, the majority of elected body of South Weaver in that process. So if the crosshatch stays, this has to be defined. When I looked at the general plan and when I went and researched this, there's only one line that defines what a crosshatch is, and it's on the map. And it says very little, and it gives little guidance and little understanding. So this should be elaborated on an entire paragraph with codes and with different things in the general plan. I also feel strongly that as the general plan has been the place where citizens have stayed in their lane. We did it. You said, "This is your chance. We did it. We got out there. We got the comments. We gave comment." That this be respected by doing what lots of other cities have done and that we have language added into the general plan and into our code that states that any change to the general plan must go through an amendment process. And that amendment process can be defined by the city council, but it needs to be amended, that it just not be voted on but amended if we make any change to the general plan. And that doesn't mean we can't amend it. It just goes through a very clear, defined, outlined process so everyone understands exactly what it means to have the plan amended. So those are just my comments tonight, and I encourage you guys to think about those things as you move forward and talk about the crosshatch marks and the development agreements on the Paul property, but also the future property development for South Weaver. Thank you.
Paul Sturm, 2527 Deer Run Drive. My first comment was a general comment, and it has to do with the timeliness of the meeting packet. I have since found tonight that the staff assembling this was busy on multiple other things and was not able to get the packet out until just yesterday, sometime between about 10:30, 11 o'clock. So it did not provide a whole lot of opportunity and time where people typically spend the weekend or time on the weekend to review packet. The next is a public comment on the Gateway Concept Design, the discussion tonight. Public comments from 9 March and 23 March meeting are included at the end of the packet that I presented to the council. During a review of the draft development agreement for the South Weaver Gateway project, I encountered several items of concern. These are page 89 of 103, paragraph D, where my question is, where in the general plan does the option to, quote, "establish a zoning designation other than A or CH," stated? Item B, page 89 of 103, paragraph E. Developer has filed two applications with the city. A rezone application seeking to establish a portion of the property as CH and the remaining portion as residential multifamily R7 and an application to develop a project on the property composed of commercial and residential components called the project. These statements do not agree with other portions of this proposed agreement wherein the developer is proposing 75 units. Please reference page 92 of 103 in the packet, paragraph 8. "Once the CH zone proposed is removed from the entire property, it cannot be included in the available area for the R7 development as stated by both city council and the public many times." Paragraph 90 of, I mean, page 90 of 103, paragraph I. "How many times has South Weaver City stated, 'Developer acknowledges that the city is relying on the faithful performance' and then been hoodwinked? As stated in previous presentations, what civil or monetary penalties can be levied against the developer for not complying with a development agreement and to protect South Weaver City?" Page 92 of 103, paragraph B. "This is a paragraph where the development is pushing for a maximum of 75 units, and that clearly exceeds the R7 designation." Item E, page 92 of 103, paragraph 10. "Height restrictions. I believe that this would be a detriment to the residents of View Drive directly south and west of the proposed development. By following the topography and the elevations shown in Exhibit A, I calculate that this would permit a structure 44 feet tall. This is calculated from a base elevation of the eastern structure of 4540 and with the lowest elevation of View Drive residence at 4578 plus the eye line view of 6 feet. And I have the calculation here, 4578 minus 4540 plus 6 equals 44 feet. I thought the height restrictions for R7 was 34 feet. As proposed in this agreement, it would permit a variance of 10 feet." Item 3. Then this brings to mind comments during the city council meeting of the 9th and the 23rd of March, which is repeated below and is presented as an overall comment regarding potential legal ramifications concerning the issues addressed above, namely, "From prior meeting comments, A, allowing all acreage in a development to be counted towards the number of housing units permitted would open Pandora's box with developers. B, by permitting one developer to count all acreage and not another, such as on the Stevens property, would, as Jamie Blakesley stated during the training, create a position where South Weaver City was being arbitrary and capricious and could open South Weaver City to a lawsuit." And then an additional comment is, once again, South Weaver City would be on a slippery slope if it were to waive height restrictions on this R7 property and then potentially not do so for another developer. Like, suggestion would be to not permit such a waiver. Also included, also included in the package I handed out are the public comments from the meeting on the 9th and the 23rd of March. Thank you.
Elizabeth Rice. My address is 7875 South 2310 East. And I just want to talk about the process of the general plan. We sat at the Highmark School and had meeting after meeting and discussed all different assets of it. And I was waiting for the part where we got to the commercial highway and the rezonings, and all of that was always put on hold. And then we had the plandemic. And I give you guys credit for rallying the troops. You got the surveys out there. You got the people to say sometimes the same thing showed up on the survey. I don't know how that happened, but I give you credit for rallying the troops. But there is the silent majority who did not participate in the general plan. The city has had their eye on this commercial property for how many years? How many years has it been on the general plan? I'd like to know that. I'd like to see how long. I know it's been at least since 2000. And my question to the citizens is, what was your property before your home was on it? Was it a peach wood? Was it the peach farms? Was it the cherry farms? Was it the Byron property that didn't have any secondary water? Which piece of property were you allowed to develop for you to be here? And everyone who is here was a part of the history of South Weaver. And yes, I have no more rights than another citizen, but I do have rights. And I feel like we've gone through the process. We've gone before the planning commission. We brought our developer with his plan. I've sat and talked with the former planning commission about what the process should be and what we should do. We've had our developers think this was going to be commercial highway zone, which was 13. Okay, then you guys have the process of the consensus and you dropped it to 7.5. So that reduces the number pretty much in half. That completely reduced it. We had apartments and we had townhomes on the first plan that we presented to the planning commission. Okay, that's gone. You've cut that in half. So I don't know why they have a problem with considering 10 acres. That hillside should be counted as part of the property. We do not want commercial blight. We don't want more commercial property than we can develop. And things have changed in the last year with COVID and the way that commercial property is being used. People aren't going to retail space, using their office space. They're using their homes. I would like to see us have a vision of what businesses we want in there. I've thought of a community bakery. What if one person didn't feel like they could have a bakery for the whole week? But we had four or five people who said, "I want to be a part of this. I will contribute and bring baked goods on Friday. I will contribute and bring baked goods on Tuesday." That would be something that would be, people have talked to me and said, "Yeah, I would like to do that, have a community bakery." We have to have vision. The other small communities in Utah, Clinton, West Point, Syracuse, all those people that I went to high school with, their cities have completely changed. We are unique. We are small, but we are part of the Wasatch Front. And there is a great need for housing. And townhomes may not be affordable housing, but if they are, more affordable housing. And I don't know of anybody who doesn't love to have their kids be by them. Yes, would give them an opportunity to be a part of our community. I don't think you look at the general plan as, "So let it be written. So let it be done." I think the general plan was a consensus, and that city council has to have a vision of the future. And they have to know what the needs are. And if you don't have a $500,000 home and you can afford to pay the taxes that are going to keep going up and up, especially as the value of the dollar goes down and down, then you might need some support and you might need some help paying your taxes. So I hope that the citizens will remember there is a whole community. There is a whole need. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Is there any further public comment? All right. Thank you to all of you who participated. We will next move to our approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the March 9th, 2021 minutes and the March 23rd, 2021 minutes. Are there comments or questions on these? If not, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mary, make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Is that with the changes Quinn requested?
With the changes Quinn requested.
And they are sitting right in front of us, correct? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment? And we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 And the motion carries unanimously. All right. Ordinance 2021-2, City Code Title VII, Chapter 4-3, Park Regulations. "The construction of a dog park prompted a look at park regulations. Staff found some necessary updates. The Parks Committee reviewed the changes and recommended the code change, which will allow the park rules to be amended in the future without an additional code rewrite." Are there comments or questions on the regulations?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And it was hard for me to tell what was edited. It would've been nice to have a redline version to pull one out of someone else's playbook. But is it because of the dog park that we changed that dogs will be allowed on a leash in all parks? And I'm sure this was a long debate in Parks and Rec, but it will be a lot of things that I get questions from.
Sure. So we did have a discussion about, does the dog park change how all the regulations are brought forth? It does affect it a little bit. The question we had with staff was, if a dog is on a leash and they're being cleaned up after, is there significant harm or inconvenience if they are on a leash and cleaned up? Does that make a difficulty for staff or for patrons? So I'm definitely open to having a discussion. I'm sure that the rest of the Parks Committee would be on this as well.
That's just been one of the debated issues for a lot of years. So that's why I was surprised it was changed. I mean, I don't have a preference. I don't take my dog to the park, so I don't care. But I don't know if there was a reason, if there was something that brought that up or if there was something from Public Works that said it was okay.
Well.
I just worry about more maintenance for them to clean up as well.
Absolutely.
All the time.
As we have the discussion, and I'm going to borrow from Dave if that's okay. We had the discussion as we were talking about this. If we approach somebody with a dog, it's in the park, it's an education, right? One way or the other, you need to make sure you have your dog on a leash or your dog doesn't belong in the park. So it's the same outcome almost, right, with that discussion? But I am happy to hear other points of view on this. I think Wayne has something to say.
I'll let Wayne, because I mean, I'm neutral. I just didn't, I wanted to know the background. I just didn't, I wanted to know the background behind it.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I, I struggle, because there's a global issue in my mind, and there's a specific issue in my mind. And yet I don't have a solution, so I don't know to bring it forward without having a solution. The global issue is, and I want to start with the tremendous lift that the Parks Committee did in this code, from going from seven lines to what we have here is a huge benefit. And I think it's, you know, grateful that they did that work. With regards to the question of, of dogs in the parks, the global issue is, this and the others that we look at are not enforceable. Yes, we have teeth in them, as you could be kicked out, or you can lose your privileges, but how does that get administered? Specifically to dogs not being allowed currently in parks has not prevented people from going into the parks with their dogs, and their dogs are defecating already. They haven't been able to control that. By allowing them is not going to change that. Again, it's not every dog, I mean, there's the eighty-twenty rule. Twenty percent make it bad for the other eighty percent. I get that. But yet, there's no way to enforce that. You can't have a person, a code enforcement officer sitting in the parks twenty-four-seven monitoring what's going on. The codes are a guideline, if you will, to self-police. The, the idea is to have people self-monitor themselves, and encourage that aspect of it. But by creating a dog park, you now give dog owners an opportunity for their pets to go and run and do what pets do, and they're responsible for cleaning up. I don't, I don't see why we want to invite that same use, even though they're on a leash. In all the other parks, there are some who are looking forward to having a dog park to know where, this is where the dogs can go, and now they can go play in the other parks where there's, no dogs are allowed. And there's a reasonable expectation that they're gonna be, the health aspect of this code is being protected, but there's not gonna be dog feces or animal feces around. I mean, I get it. I was at the Easter egg hunt, great job you guys, and was standing by the fence, watching all the kids, and there was a pile of dog crap right there. It happens. And so inviting them to be in the parks with a leash is not gonna stop that. Human, you know, we just somehow, we need to get the people to self-police and self-enforce. I'm not in favor of allowing dogs in all the parks if, if we're giving the dogs a place to go. And I have some other comments about the, the, the dog park aspects of some improvements, but I don't know how you enforce it. You know, if you allow them in there, how are you gonna enforce them cleaning up after themselves? I mean, I've got people having their dogs defecate in my front yard, walking them down the sidewalk, and I can't get them to pick up their own feces doing that. So how can we expect it in the other park? I just think we're, we're allowing it because people are doing it anyways, but what's gonna stop the, the detriment? And that's, I don't have an answer for that. But go ahead and take your shots at me, but that's, that's where I'm, where I'm at.
I, I have no shots today. This is a hard one, because like you stated, they're already there. They're already bringing dogs in. Every time I go to the park, I see somebody bringing a dog in. So this was kind of a hard thing, do we allow it because they're already there? And at the end of the day, is it any different if the dog's there on a leash and it's allowed? And if a dog's not allowed, but it's there anyways? Am I making sense?
From my perspective, if they're not allowed, do you have some, you have a law ordinance that says you can't have your dog here, move it? And it removes the potential. Not that it was gonna stop people, but if you allow dogs to be there, now you're inviting the use, and now you're having to go around and clean up. And I think it's gonna create more work for our Public Works staff to go through and have to police the, the, the parks and pick up after people. And again, it's not every dog owner. I love dogs, don't have one, had one, died, sorry, bad memory, but you know, it's the eighty-twenty rule. You're gonna have twenty percent of the people who just, oh, I'm not, and they're, and it's making it bad for everyone else. How do we get to twenty percent to comply? I don't know, I don't have an answer for that. So rather than introduce the use, I thought, you know what? Dogs, you've got your dog park now. That's where you go. You don't go to these other parks. That's for the non-dog users, if you will. That's just my opinion.
Awesome. Okay. Thanks, Wayne.
Are there other comments on that?
I just have a question about the, the packet on page thirty-four. There's a list of A through H park regulations that's not in the park, you know, regulation thing. And in there, we specifically state, the following will not be allowed in any of the city parks. Dogs either with or without a leash is listed, bicycles are listed there, but in the actual text of it, the one we've been discussing, says, you know, dogs with a leash.
Is that our?
And we allow bicycles.
Yeah, this, this is something that we could have clarified in the packet. To, to Blair's point about having a, a red line version, that one page with those seven items is our current code.
Okay.
So that's the change, is that those seven lines or, or eight lines are going to be removed. And an entire rewrite was done and fleshed out. So that is the change. And I apologize for not making that more clear.
So I, I just, I have a couple things, but I, I wanted to commend the Parks and Rec Committee for taking these seven or eight lines and making them three pages. It, it's, it's very in-depth and thorough, and I appreciate the time that you guys spent on it. I have the same question about the dogs. My, my, my thought is, is that if we have no dogs allowed in the parks, it makes it easier to enforce, because then you're able to just see there's a dog in there and immediately let them know it's not allowed versus seeing there's a dog in there on a leash and then watching to see if they clean up after themselves. I, I wish we could get a better way of enforcing this. It, it is a problem, unfortunately, and I, and I don't have the answer to that either, but I think if we are adding dogs back into the parks, it's gonna actually just kind of confuse the whole process a little more, or, and make it maybe even harder to enforce, because then you're, then you're watching to see if they're actually gonna pick up after their pet or not, rather than just knowing that their, their pet's not allowed in there. Where we do have the dog park available, I feel like we should continue to not allow dogs in our city parks. A couple other questions I just had was on letter P, the park hours. Can, can the committee kind of help me understand the five AM to eleven PM timeframe? Was there a time before on the parks?
I really thought we had said six. Quinn, do you remember?
Yeah, I thought we were doing the same thing that we had everywhere else.
Yeah.
Six to ten or something. So that might be one that we overlooked.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the only, and I hate to even bring this one up, but on M with restroom facilities, and maybe Jamie, you can weigh in on this, but considering.
Before you even go there.
Thank you.
There's been an amendment to that.
Okay.
Lisa, would you bring up, there were some additional suggestions made. And so there's a red line version with, with some amendments there that.
In, in our packet?
Not in the packet, no. It was after the packet was, was produced, a recognition that some of those items didn't show up the way that was intended. And so what you're bringing up in, in M was one of those items where it, it simply says no person, and removes any reference to gender.
Thank you, I, I did not catch that, so I appreciate that.
No, we, we need to, we need to show that, so that you can see what those were. They, there are suggestions that were made in an email, and so bringing those forward so that you can see that. If there's any, if there's any question or concern, you always have the opportunity to continue the item, and we can work on making this a cleaner version and, and addressing some of these concerns and issues, and so that you don't feel like you're legislating on the fly. Of course, you could do that if you wanted to in a motion to suggest those changes, but to make that easier, you have the opportunity to, of course, to continue it, and we can.
Can we see item M, Lisa? Thank you.
And as Lisa does that, to Dave's point, I have no qualms taking this back at all and changing anything. I'm not married to any of these ideas, so.
Well, I think you guys have done a good job.
Absolutely.
If we're, if we're okay with taking dogs, and I don't want to discriminate it just to dogs, and we can say all pets, but out, and make the changes that are on the line, I'm okay with adopting it, because I think it's a much better document than what we currently have.
I would just like to add, can we leave cat on a leash in the park? Because I would just really like to see that happen.
Just couldn't resist, couldn't you?
I, I really couldn't. I'm sorry, I tried, but I couldn't.
Okay.
So I got one question. I, I guess it comes to the, I'm trying to find it, the motor vehicle. There's a fifteen mile an hour limit, and I wonder, is that just too high? Especially if you have young kids playing around on the sidewalk and somebody's going by fifteen miles an hour pretty quick. And I hate to see a toddler or something like that be struck by, I wonder, yeah, I think it's number four, paragraph B, number one to number four.
Yeah, she just pulled it up.
I understand what we're trying to say in the, in the uses there, but, I mean, my golf cars that work are capital, are governed at ten, and even those are going pretty quick. I'm like, how, how do you, I know what we're trying to do and trying to qualify, but how do you, how do you administer that? Is that a statement we want to leave in there, or is that just leave it as it is? Motorized wheelchairs and electric bicycles? Kept speeds kept, I, I guess you do need to put some of those kind of mile per hour in there, but fifteen just seems to be, I don't know, what's your thought on, how'd you guys come up with fifteen? I should ask that question, it just seems high.
So we, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, we polled other cities' regulations for parks and.
Okay.
Pulled from those.
Yeah, we, we used some other cities as a template and kind of worked off.
Is it just, was it several ones that you kind of consensus, or was it just one template? I'm just kind of sure if this was similar, more than one.
No, there were several, but I think the primary city we borrowed from were Farmington Cities there.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I would, I would just note on that, we do have an electric scooter that claims it can go fifteen, but that's not sustainable. So it, and I don't have a radar to track kids.
Just go down nineteen hundred east.
It's a good question, it's a good question.
Collisions, you know, you're gonna get multiple uses, two people aren't paying attention, and accident's gonna happen, and who's gonna be liable? You know, we're providing certain rules and certain aspects, so that's where my mind goes to, is liability, and are we creating ourselves something for us? I don't know. I'm talking into it.
Would you?
I can hear.
I can hear Wayne. He's very quiet. Would you prefer that number to be different?
Uh, no, given that we have a, 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 go-bys, I'm fine with that. I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're.
Well, I'm fine with changing to ten as well. Nobody's got a.
I, I would, I would like to see it changed to ten.
Put it lower.
Okay. If, if there's some consensus to go lower, I think ten would be a more comfortable number in my gut than fifteen. But now they say, how are you gonna administer that? No one's gonna be out there with a radar gun, it's gonna be.
It's just a liability side, if you put it lower.
It's a liability.
Yeah.
Can I just jump back to the dogs? What is our current enforcement? So let's just say you're at the park, you see an, an owner in there with a dog on a leash or not on a leash, and you contact Chris and let him know. What, what's the process after that?
Just like any type of code enforcement, right? That there's a process there. But typically citations are not what happens in this type of a situation. As Angie stated, education usually happens before citation. All animal-related code actually goes through animal control, not necessarily through our own code enforcement officer. However, our code enforcement officer, Davis County Sheriff's Office, even our own parks staff, if, or other staff, if we see violations, will, will try to educate. And, for example, just the other day, I know one of our staffers was out and saw a family, one of them, one of the members of the family had the dog on the leash, the dog did its business, and they just kind of pushed it under the slide. And so they kindly went up and said, you can't do that, you need to take care of that. And so, you know, they went and grabbed a bag and took care of it, so. But as far as a process, if there is, if there's no dogs allowed and you have somebody who's continually bringing that in, in theory, again, practice sometimes is difficult, but in theory, a, a code enforcement, animal control officer would be called. If they are able to cite, then of course, there's, there's tracking of that animal, and if it happens repetitively, then there's, you know, there's a code enforcement process that happens there. Was that the question?
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. I guess the only thing I would add to, to the dogs, I, I think if, if we decide to add them or allow them in the parks, perhaps looking into providing doggy bags, which I know is an additional cost to the city, and so maybe not something, but something to offer to the residents who are coming if we are going to allow dogs, would be something to consider, I think.
I get, I get so frustrated on the trail when I see a doggy bag sitting on the side of the trail. It adds fuel to the fire, you know, and just, you know, if it was just the feces, it would eventually go away, but the plastic bag makes it even. So I don't know, I, I have mixed feelings on those as well.
So, nevermind.
We do have a Public Works team, though, that does clean up in the park.
It is a problem. When we did the Easter egg hunt, it didn't help, we had just aerated the, the park. But there.
More eggs.
There was a lot of dog poop, and I, it was hard knowing that all those kids are rushing out on there, and, and maybe it's dirt, maybe it's not. It, it's a problem, so.
Maybe it was better it was just aerated.
Maybe.
Could just know it was aerated, but you were running.
Maybe.
Okay, well, we have some changes.
Mayor, if I may, so I, I'm, I'm hearing remove dogs as a permitted use. Section B one, change it to ten miles an hour, and in section M, change it with the notation where it has no person. Did I miss anything else?
Section P.
The hours, section P, six to ten.
So I just would like to know if this is enough changes that the council wants the Parks Committee to bring this back, because we could do that pretty quickly.
The only other thing I would suggest is, as Lisa has scrolled through those changes that were suggested, most of them grammatical, right? There wasn't, there wasn't a lot that was substantial, but there were a couple there that have already been noted. But if you wanted to include, include any of those other red lines that have been shown tonight.
If you're, if it's easier to bring it back clean, I'm okay, I'm okay doing it either way.
Well, we will be meeting tomorrow, so we may be able to just hurry and do a quick run-through of this. Does that sound fair?
That sounds great.
Okay, is the whole council, and particularly the Parks Committee, okay with removing the dog on a leash from parks? Are we?
I am.
I'm fine with them.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve, table or deny, ordinance twenty-one?
Mayor, I'll make, oh.
Go for it.
Thank you, sir. I make a motion that we table resolution twenty-one dash twenty dot, oh, no, no. Let's table, new motion, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two, city code title seven, chapter four to three, park regulations, tabled. Did I say that part?
Until, you give a, you need a table, when you gotta bring it back.
Until our next city council meeting.
There you go.
Next city council.
Until the next city council meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any, any further comment? And we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number six, oh, and thank you, Parks Committee, for all your hard work on this. It really, you really have done huge improvements to these, these rules and regulations, so. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty, dog park rules, with the change to title seven, chapter four, park rules can be updated through resolution. The Parks Committee has reviewed the rules and is recommending specific regulations for the dog park.
Mayor?
Yeah, so does this.
Based on the last action, this should probably continue as.
Continue, so do we need a formal motion to?
Would you like some feedback before?
I think, I think a discussion is great, but recognizing that we have not. I think, I think a discussion is great, but recognizing that we have not made changes to titles, I mean, chapter four. And so that this is dependent on that and should wait for that.
So are there comments or questions on dog park rules?
I'd like to thank the committee for the work that they've done here. It's an exceptional lift. But I do have one, well, two concerns. One, the liability that's stated in here, not everyone who uses dog park is going to read this document. And we're going to get people from other cities out of, out of town who are going to use the park, obviously. I don't have a problem with that. But the liability aspect, I wonder if we want to improve upon that by placing some sort of sign at the entrance that use of these premises. The user assumes all liability or, you know, something like that. Cause I don't want a, a dog bite or injury, fall back on the deep pockets. And that's one of my suggestions, if we can take it one step further. The other concern I have is occupancy. Should there be a limit to the number of occupants inside the fenced area? Given the popularity of dog parks, you, you could have an issue and I, but I don't know what that number is. But I think we should put some sort of expectation being the occupants, you know, you have to have one or I think you can have two dogs per one. Human, some, some ratio like that. So I think it would improve upon the regulations if we could have an occupancy limit. Those are my comments.
An occupancy lim- limit?
That would be some sort of occupancy. How many dogs people can you have within the confines? I mean, I don't know. Dogs need so much space to run.
I, I know when Mark, and this is going back to when I was in the parks, I mean, they were looking at several different other cities rules. Did anybody, do you remember Angie if they had or Quinn, if they had any, there wasn't.
Yeah, there were a couple of things we looked at, you know, in here it allows each individual two dogs, but it doesn't say there's a maximum of 100 dogs or 20 dogs.
How much can the park itself withstand? Is it 50, is it 40?
Yeah, that's a good point. The other one that we discussed, but didn't put in here that we saw in some other cities was they had size. A large dog portion and a small dog portion. We didn't put that in, but that's, I'm, I'm not a dog owner. So I'd like feedback from people.
We did notate. We have two dog entrances. So if that's something we need to add, we could put a fence down the middle.
Is that something that we need to just monitor and see how it's used and with what dogs? And then if there's an issue?
Yeah, that's the way that I remember the committee leaving it was we're going to leave it open. And then if there was the issue, we did have the opportunity to put a fence through the middle and split it up by size. Is that correct?
Yes.
With the occupancy, how would you enforce that?
The same way you enforce all the other aspects of the regulations.
I mean, there's, there has to be a way to get a, a maximum number. I don't know how to do that, but there's got to be a way to come up with.
This is something maybe we could touch base with animal control and see if they have any type of input that could be valuable.
Height line.
If it can be added, it can be added. I think if not.
Agreed.
I think you guys did a very good job. Thanks for doing it.
Agreed. Very well done. Thank you, Park.
So, um, feedback being a sign that says owner assumes responsibility and maybe notate our city code. The, the section of the city code, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For.
I mean, basically item 18 patrons use the dog park at their own risk. I mean, that's kind of the initial. The type of sign I think Wayne's referring to.
Yeah. But my point being is they're not going to say read this before they use it. But if you had a sign on the entrance and just like the use thereof, owner accepts all liability responsibility.
I support that. That's a great idea.
There will be signs posted, right? As far as the dog park rules, we could not do that until, of course, we've finalized those. But the signs will be part of that and we can include that. Speaking of that type of kind of importance, right? That item is one of, of import, maybe. There was a suggestion made to maybe reorder these specifically to pull one out and put it right at the top. Lisa was sharing that for a minute. If you had a chance to look at that, maybe Lisa can pull that back up so that you can see it. But if there's other suggestions as far as renumbering, if you think that would be valuable in any way, that's something that can be looked at too. As we continue this item and, and continue to work through those details.
I do have one final question, just on the hours, 6:00 AM to sunset daily. I'm assuming you guys did the sunset because there's no lights over there, just following the light. But 6:00 AM at different times of the year, it may be light and it may not be. Was there a reason why you didn't go with sunrise to sunset?
If, um, recalling because we had said 6:00, that's why I'm so flabbergasted how it's at 5:00 AM. Cause I know we had a lengthy discussion about 6:00 AM in the park rules, but I think it was just consistency that we said six and then once the. And all parks open at six and then this is close to the sunset. But I have no, I mean, we can change it from sunset, sunrise.
I don't have, I don't have a preference either way. I'm just, if the other, the other parks were 10:00 PM, I believe, and this one sunset. So just something to consider.
You know, and maybe this goes back to both discussions. So I'm out at every morning at six o'clock feeding and I'm awfully noisy in my neighbor's backyard. The dog park and that, I'm sure I hear it from my, all their lights. And, uh, and I'm, I'm sure a dog park in, there's several, what, six homes that border that park is 6:00 AM too early. If people are going to be there, I mean, their dogs are going to bark. I mean, it's just what's going to happen. I mean, today my dog barked at all the calves to get them to come back. So all their, all my neighbors' lights came on. And so is that going to be an issue?
Yeah.
At six. I mean, is six too early? Is seven better? I, I mean, that, that's a tough one. I mean, cause it's, it's, it's not light at six o'clock in the morning. And I don't want to, I don't want to cause it a big dilemma or debate over it. I just think it's.
I feel like Blair's causing a big dilemma and debate.
Yeah, you know, this is the last thing I want to have that debate about. So I just, I think seven o'clock would be a better time, especially if it's going to be noisy.
I, I support that and I'm.
Okay. Well, that can be noted and discussed in the meeting tomorrow, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Then do I have a motion to approve table or deny resolution 21 dash 20?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to table. Where is it? Res- resolution 21 dash 20 till our next city council meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any further comment? We'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 Aye, and thank you for your work.
Yes, thank you, Parks. All right. Next item is resolution 21 dash 21 sewer management annual report. And Mark Johnson is here to present the municipal wastewater annual report for the year ending 2020 for South Weaver City. He's also our door monitor.
That's why I locked it in on nobody else. Yeah. So every year I get one of these, uh, since I've been doing it. I know it's been long before my time, but. And a lot of it, I am just getting information from separate departments. Financial information, just information as to what our sewer system has in it, length of pipe and, and whatnot. It, uh, does have to come before the city council every year, or it should come before the city council every year to get approved. So that's what I'm here for. I appreciate you giving me some of your time. Do you want me to go down the whole thing? I'm assuming that you.
Highlights are.
Yeah. So I, there's obviously things that could use some work there. But basically it just goes through and, and make sure that our system is, is operating properly. We have a fairly new sewer system in regards to. When all of the pipe was laid into the ground compared to some of the other neighboring cities. I know some of them still actually have clay pipe in the ground. So we are very fortunate to have a newer sewer system. And as such, uh, we have been very fortunate to have very few backups. We haven't had any, any backups on our side of the system in the last year for 2020. The only problems that I have known of were from the, the resident side before it goes into the, to the main line. Where they've had a couple of different reasons why they've had backups into, into their house or, or even business. So. But our, our system currently is, is operating really well. Like I said, we haven't had any issues with it. And yeah, I. I don't know. You guys have any questions for me?
Anyone have questions? Wayne?
Appreciate the effort here. Uh, this is the first time I've seen this in the five years that I've been sitting on the council. So thanks for bringing it forward. Being on the municipal utilities committee and reviewing this, it brings, it highlights two things that we've been talking about. And need to make some improvements on, and that is our capital improvement reserves and revenues aspect on the sewer fund. As well as our asset management program. And it's just highlights those two, two things we've been talking about. So as a committee, we need to renew our emphasis and maybe work towards that. Uh, I do appreciate the effort and you put forth on here. Did you know toward the end, there's one question that was left blank?
Was it, if it's been presented, there was one that was like, if it's been presented to the city council, it was left blank since.
There was another one before that. It was a question that was not answered and I didn't know.
It's on page 62.
On part six, SSPM evaluation. Has the SSMP been adopted by the permitting government? I don't know about that one. Yeah, that's the one that was blank. Sorry. You, you are correct.
Yeah, that, that one I, I did leave blank since it, you know, I, I wanted to bring it before you guys. So that and then. I have to report it to the state after it gets adopted, if it, if you guys approve it. So.
I, I, it's a good report. It's like, say it does highlight some things we need to work on.
I, I had highlighted just a few things and Wayne brought them up just to see if we can help our parks and, no, not wrong one, public works. Get caught up. Uh, so admin and finance or municipality, sorry, was brought up, uh, number, sorry, let me scroll down. Page. 62, um, the emergency response and the safety plan for the sewer systems. I feel like public safety would be one that could work with that on that one. But the one I wasn't sure about was on page. Give me. 54. Um, do you maintain a plan of operations? That was a no. Um, where would that go that we could work on that?
Yeah, that, that's something that needs to be kind of addressed. So what we've been doing in the past is our, our plan of operations has just kind of been. I don't know if you want to call it word of mouth, but they used to have a thing through the, the government's trust where every year they would require us to go around and inspect. Open up every sewer manhole to make sure that there's no obstructions in it or anything like that. And then, you know, we would. Get a better deal with in, insurance that way. And they have since stopped doing that. Because you can go back and say, you know, if you did have a backup, hey, I was following everything that the government's trust said, and I still had a backup. And so it was like a liability issue for them. But since they stopped doing that, I've continued on and still do all of the inspections in every single manhole every year. And that's, I, I don't have it down on paper. It's something that I, I need to work on, but I have a, a cleaning schedule where it's broken down into. Fifth. So the whole sewer system is cleaned at least one section, but the whole thing's cleaned every, every five years. So one section a year for every five years. But I, I just need to get it down into an actual format.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be really awesome to have, especially if we have any change of, of staff or anything that it's written there and can continue on. I think that's great. So appreciate this report. It was very helpful to see how everything's going. So appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I, I think that this report does a number of really good things for us. Um, and one of those is to recognize that our sewer system is run really well. But it also does, um, because of the nature of the questions, do you have this? Do you have that? Whenever you put a no, it, it makes a little flag for you. So if we want these answers to change, right? This is essentially an informational report that we give to, want those answers to change, then, you know, these committees can work on that and, and make those answers more in line with what we'd like.
Appreciate you coming to do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Appreciate you.
And the old analogy, what's crap to you is bread and butter to him.
Is that true, Mark?
Mayor, I make a motion. We pass, uh, we approve resolution 2121, um, adopting the municipal wastewater planning program 2020 report.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comment? Let's have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Appreciate you, Mark, and appreciate all the public works team. You guys do a great job. So thank you. All right. Resolution 21 dash 22 cottonwood drive paving project. Cottonwood Drive was identified as needing a major road maintenance, but the cottonwood water line had to be completed prior to repair. The work on the joint water line has now been completed. Consequently, on March 25th, 2021 bids were open for the cottonwood drive paving project. Seven bids were received. Jones and Associates had checked the bids and found no errors. This project entails removing the remaining existing asphalt on cottonwood drive, repairing any soft spots, grading and paving with new asphalt. The bid included an alternate item to allow an anti-stripping agent other than the city mix design standard of 1% lime slurry. This was done to potentially reduce costs. Performance of other anti-stripped agents versus the lime slurry is debatable. Some feel that lime is better and others feel that there are other products that perform just as well, but are not as difficult to work with as lime. After having discussed the matter at length with Mark Larson and others, it was felt that the savings were not enough to justify doing something different, different. After reviewing all bids, engineer Brandon Joan recommends that the council award the project to post-construction company with their low bid of $221,040. This recommendation is also based upon the contractor's experience and a proven history of quality work for the city. Other comments or questions? And hearing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve resolution 21 dash 22 cottonwood drive paving project.
I'll second.
The other page, sorry. Awarded to post-construction company with their bid of $221,040.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further comments? And we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Brandon, you did a good job, uh, budgeting.
Yeah. Nice job, Brandon. Thank you.
Yeah, we got to give them a shout out when it's like that big a saving.
Very good. That's, that's a rare thing on the, on that much of a difference. But when, when do they anticipate starting?
I, I don't know. I, I haven't talked to them. I was waiting for tonight, but they do need to be complete before the end of June.
Cause I do believe there's two batch plants now open. So, or.
Yeah. I, I anticipate that they'll begin as soon as possible.
Do they have a completion date they're supposed to?
Yeah, the end of June.
End of June. Okay. Thank you.
Can, can you tell me how this aligns with our application for grant money dip, I believe it was for this project, correct? With the trail around or the sidewalk? How, how would we proceed with that if we were to get the grant?
If you were to get the grant, then we would adjust the edges of the pavement as, as it was installed with this project. And redo the whole road. We would just adjust the edges accordingly.
So now with this project, we would change our plan if we were to get the grant to adjust the edges of the.
Well, I, for this to be completed by the end of June, I mean, are, if, are you talking about right now?
Yeah, I don't know when those are awarded, those grants to you.
This, well, I don't know the exact dates of when those will be awarded, but this project is, is going to need to move forward just as it is. The road's already torn, torn up. And so, um, which we were trying to save money on that by. Not doing all of the repairs on that because we knew this project was coming.
Right.
So if. So if, if we were to get awarded, most of the funding cycles for those different things that we've put in for grant funding don't fund immediately anyway. So the scenario is really that we will go and pave this road. And if we get something awarded, then we would adjust to what gets paved this time. It would be again, making adjustments along the edge of the road for the trails or other things like that if we were awarded.
Okay.
I don't know if I answered your question.
For those that are interested, a grant application was, was put in to see if there could be improvements along the side of the road related to the trail there, not anything to do with the pavement itself. And so the projects are unrelated, but there is potential there that we're hopeful. The Parks Committee had worked on that grant application. So if that gets funded, then, then that work would happen separate and distinct from this project.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item number nine, resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, first amendment to the development agreement for Riverside RV Park. On March ninth, twenty-twenty-one, Riverside requested two amendments to the development agreement recorded on November fifth, twenty-twenty. First, a landscaping variation and second, a fencing change. The council agreed on the change of the fencing to a sound wall, but requested further changes to the proposed landscaping. The developers bringing back the modified plan for approval. Are there questions or comments on that plan?
Are they not going to be here today? I guess not.
I'm on Zoom if I can speak. I apologize. I don't know if it's coming through. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, this is McKay Winkle, developer Riverside RV Park. Hello, everyone.
Hi, McKay. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for having me remotely. So I don't know if I should just kind of talk through this. We, I didn't see the, the plan in the packet sent, but the last meeting, it was suggested that we go with a drought tolerant grass as opposed to some of the gravel we had pitched last time. So we, we looked at a couple of different, several different options, talked to some experts and came up with a, a grass that requires a lot less watering. It's a, it's a fine fescue. Me, I don't know, Lisa, if you have that photo of kind of what it looks like as well as some of the characteristics of it. But our plan was, so that's, that's according to the website. So that's, I'm sure, you know, under perfect lighting and watering and fertilizing conditions. But what we had asked that our landscape guy go do is, is go back to the original approved landscape plan and in the locations of Kentucky bluegrass to put this stuff, you know, which, which he did. I don't know. Do you guys have a copy of the new plan?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good. So a couple of things I noticed in that we kind of scrambled to get that in on time. And but so some of the changes I want to call out and we don't really have this in a table, but we added this grass around the cabin units in the center of the park. And we also changed to woodchips in the tent sites down the bottom. And I don't know if you've got the two plans side by side, but it almost looks like in the new plan, the boundary of the new fescue grass shrunk around the office. That's not the intent. I think we, we still plan to keep the same kind of location as the first plan. And if, if this grass is what, you know, people say it is, we talked to this grass specialist in Lehigh. We would like to be able to substitute this stuff in areas where, some of the areas where it says, you know, native grasses. I think it might look a little better.
Sorry, McKay, can I interrupt? Lisa, it's page seventy. Sorry, McKay.
You're good. And so I, I think we would, we, we added kind of a note on the native grass legend there that just says, you know, native grass and wildflower mix or other drought tolerant grass. We added that language because I think if, if this fine fescue that we're putting on all the sites is adequate, you know, we'd, we'd put that fine fescue probably more in the area of the registration building and make all that, that nice green grass looking, but also on the I-84 boundary. And let's see. Let's see what else. What other change we did? We, we reduced some of the shrubs on the row on the riverside spaces. And let's see, I think another change was, yeah, so we did, and I apologize, I meant to have a better picture of this, but the spaces on the I-84 side, we left this gravel between, but they're going to be kind of those tall grasses that are kind of give some privacy to those spaces. And I, I still think that'll look better than just grass there. I think it'll be a really clean, modern, they're kind of those, those tall karl forester grasses that, you know, are kind of those real tall tan wheat looking things or most of them. But I think it'll look better with the gravel there and then we'll just water, you know, those shrubs there. So we, we took out grass on those I-84 sides, but I, I truly think it's not just trying to save money on watering, but I do think that would look better in that area. And so hopefully that's, that's all right. But we, we may have a lead on some secondary water for watering. And we're still pursuing that and really hope we can get that. In the case that we do get secondary water, we're more than happy to go back to a, a prettier Kentucky bluegrass. Or, you know, if, if this fine fescue looks good and does use less water, I'm not sure what it's really going to look like. The people there said they're actually putting it into their own lawns. It's, it's drought tolerant. It's soft. It's not bunchy. It grows like a carpet and you water it significantly less. And so I'm optimistic about it, but at the same time, I don't want to give up on the secondary water for the site. One, one other note that did not get included in this new plan that I'd like to add, we, we had told the guy, the landscape guy to change the gravel color on the riverside of the units. And he did it on a couple of them, but not all of them. Instead of that gray chat, we wanted to have it that Nephi cobble, they call it. It's a, well, it has a little more color in it. It's a little prettier. So kind of at the rear of the sites on the riverside, we'd like to be able to interchangeably, or if we could just substitute the wording in there that, that gray chat could also be Nephi cobble on those backsides on the riverside RV spaces.
Okay. Thank you, McKay. Are there questions or comments from McKay?
I have a few.
Yep.
So McKay, it would have been really helpful if you would have kept your original map and your new one and outlined this in your request so that we could see exactly what it was. You, I, I had to go through and, and study the old map to the new map. And you touched on a lot of the things that I, I saw. I also saw, if I'm correct, site seventy-one and seventy-two were changed from a back end to a pull-through to minimize the dog park.
Yeah, those, those were changed. We, because we relocated the dog park, I apologize if I forgot to mention that. The dog park's going in the very tail of the site. And so it just left kind of an awkward kind of green space. And so we thought for convenience, it'd be better for those folks getting in and out to make that a pull-through space. And I, I think they're a little more desirable of a space. But yes, that, that was a change as well.
So are you saying the dog park would be over with the tent sites or up against the, the river?
It's, our, our property has a unique tail past the tent sites.
Oh, I know what you're speaking of. Okay.
And anyway, we plan to put it there and we.
So some other things that I have.
Yeah, that's, that's not shown on this new one. I got left out, but the dog park is in that little tail in, in the bottom.
Thank you. So I, I checked all of your things. You, you mentioned just now that you, you got rid of some sort of shrubs. I'm, I'm going to lay out these numbers here for you. I have the same number of trees and you added four evergreens, but you removed one-hundred-and-eighty-two shrubs. You removed five hundred, five hundred annuals and perennials. You removed one-hundred-and-sixty-four decorative grasses. You added ten-thousand square feet of mulch. You added fifteen-thousand square feet of rock. You removed eight thousand, removed eight thousand square feet of wild grasses. In total, you removed almost eight-hundred-and-fifty plants and flowers. I, I'm not quite sure why you wouldn't be upfront with that, us on that. I was not very pleased to have to dig through all of that and compare your quantity from your plan back in June to this plan. Even more bemused that you didn't mention that other than we removed a few shrubs. I'm not, I'm really frustrated. First off, because you knew when you bought this property that you were going to have culinary. You also knew when we passed this in June that you had culinary. The plan that you proposed to us then had culinary. So this isn't something new to you, but not only have you come and you changed it quite a bit, you removed a lot of it and it sure feels like you were just trying to not let us know about that and hoping we didn't pay attention. And I don't know if that was your intent or not, but it feels like it. Is this working? Okay. Anyway, so.
No, I, I had never looked at the shrub count. We, we did say, I mean, on the original plan, the shrubs on that riverside row there were, were super packed in. And it was just something we never looked at. So I told them to reduce them, but honestly, I never actually looked at the, at the counts. I'm surprised they're that high, honestly.
Yeah, they're, they're quite high and you can, you can just set them side by side. You, you saw the same landscaping plants and everything, but you cut them down drastically. Again, as I told you the last time you came to the council, this was the only part of the plan that I approved. And I am kind of regretting that at this point because you promised us a very nice RV park and you put the council in a difficult spot. Because on the one hand, of course, we want you to be water wise. We want you to conserve water. But on the other hand, we also had a plan that you prepared for us under the exact same conditions you're under right now, that you had culinary water. And, you know, you get secondary, there should be no changes at all. But, you know, I could understand that this was secondary and then at the last moment you found out it was just culinary. But I'm just really frustrated that that's the way that this came down. And so I, I'm having a really difficult time with these changes and.
I, I apologize. I'll, I'll check those counts. Those do seem surprising to me. When I look at the, the plans, I still see a, like each space on that riverside, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I still see eight shrubs.
Actually, if you look at your plants, plants, you, you didn't actually change it on the plants. It looks like a lot of them are still there and I didn't go through it that time that closely because after that I'd been spending an hour. But if you just take your quantity from your previous plan and just go down one by one on your quantity, you'll see that you greatly drastically reduced them between the old plan and this proposed plan.
Okay, I honestly never looked at the counts. But just to see that the shrubs were still there in, in a, you know, some quantity. But how we can, we can remedy that. Again, I apologize. They'd start us out like that. It was, it was not at all to pull anything over on you guys or not address that properly. I just hadn't reviewed the counts specifically. Honestly, the rest, the instructions to the guy were go back to the original plan, reduce the shrubs on that riverside and put grasses, add grasses to the cabins and use this fine fescue. And then kind of change some of the, some of the gravel colors and woodchips. Honestly, I, I got the, the drawing within and sent it in for city council within about ten minutes. We were just trying to get it in and submitted real quick. And so I didn't have a ton of time to review it.
Thank you, McKay. Are there other questions?
I, I guess on that note, McKay, I, I feel like if, if you didn't have very much time to review this before you submitted it, that perhaps maybe we should take more time to review this before we approve it because there are some significant differences.
Let's, let's hit those so we can get it right. I mean, we, we, we do plan to reduce some shrubs. I don't know if you feel like those are, are going to be locked in or keep as we had them or if you're open to reducing them. Not sure where you'd like to start for some feedback, but open to that.
Is the intent to reduce the number of shrubs just the initial cost upfront or watering or both? What's the?
It's both, honestly.
So, so my thoughts to that, McKay, is a, a few shrubs may not make too much of a difference to your watering. I mean, if, if you're charged by the one-thousand per gallons, you know, you're talking, maybe, maybe you use all of these plants that were in the original plan was, you know, some forty-nine-hundred gallons. We still charge you for four-thousand. And you lower the amount of shrubs and you use forty-two-hundred gallons of water, you're still charged to the four-thousand. So in the end, or is it rounded up? Either way, either way, in the end, I don't know that it's that big of a significant. I mean, if you're talking a few shrubs, I'm not sure that that's significantly going to impact your watering. I don't even know if this many would significantly impact your watering just because we do charge it by the one-thousand gallons.
Other comments?
So if we go, do you feel like we stay with the previous shrub amounts? Or, I mean, is there room to reduce those? I realize I'm on thin ice. I still want to push it too, too, too hard.
I'm only one in five, but I, I don't think the reduction of shrubs is going to be, it's definitely going to be an upfront cost for you. I don't know that it will necessarily be too much of a dramatic cost savings in watering.
It may not be a cost savings, but it, it may be a water savings. I mean, if, if we're trying to conserve water, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with going to a drought tolerant grass as long as it looks nice and it's green and it's a nice grass. It, it's hard to tell McKay from the shrub, the counts, I don't think are the same as what we're seeing on the actual representation of your original proposal anyway. So it's hard to kind of get a feel for whether those counts are accurate or not. I haven't gone through and actually counted all of the little purple dots. It's pretty hard to do. But I, I think it, I think we need to go back to the, I, I was okay going to a drought tolerant grass in all the original areas, as long as we stayed with the grass in the original areas. That was kind of the way I thought we left last meeting is that we'd approved the change in the fence and that you were going to look at a drought tolerant grass. I had no idea that you were coming back with the rest of the changes. I'm okay with the change in the, the minor changes in the site plan for a better layout, like the drive-through, the dog park, those things aren't a problem. But as far as the overall aesthetics, I think, need to remain very, very close to the original.
To that, I mean, how, how do you guys feel about the, on the freeway side, those spaces? These are, these are designed to be taller shrubs that I, I think would look better with a, like a gravel base as opposed to just another grass with, with the tall shrub around it. Is that going to be looked at or do you want to go back to grass in those? going to be looked at or do you want to go back to grass in those spots?
I'm not.
The grasses, I can, I can understand the grasses conserving water. Um, you know, those shrubs, they all have drips or they should. I'm assuming that you're going to. But it, it is, it is a hard pill for me personally to swallow, as you did promise us numerous times, a very nice park. And these, these are small parts of a park that make a park really nice. Um, again, you've, you've put the council in a difficult position between ensuring that we get what we approved and in conserving water and being water-wise. So it's a frustrating place to be as a council member.
McKay, as you have articulated, you didn't have much time to review this and it's clear. Uh, I think you need the opportunity to take this back and spend some time that you need to and make it more consistent with the counts that Haley has brought up with regards to the shrubbery. I too echo Blair's comments. I, I don't have any issue with the grasses that are picked right there, but I think this needs to be tabled. You need to do your homework, make sure it meets what we expect, what you expect, and then bring it back to us.
Good. Um, not, not to belabor too much of a point, but just curious again on those I-84 side, where we put gravel between sites with the tall shrubs. Um, would it be council's preference to maintain the grass between those, those sides? Or, or can that be a kind of a gravel, you know, modern look there?
Can you tell us what your purpose is behind that again?
Uh, the, the plants on that side are meant to be kind of a taller, um, I don't know if I can share my screen, but it kind of, it's called a Carl Forrester. Very kind of tall, um, tan and a modern plant, uh, as well as kind of some other. Uh, I think the other one is, I'm not sure if it's an evergreen, but it's a green, tall, um, plant as well that just gives a little bit of privacy as well as kind of elevation. Um, I could Google. Something to share here with you, but.
So you, you think it wouldn't look as good with the, the grass to the side of it as it would with gravel?
I, I would prefer to see something if you have it.
Yeah, I can, if I can throw it on my, can I see if I can share the, share the screen here?
You should be able to.
Okay, so it'll be a, um, here's a photo. Let me go share screen here. So the way that'll, will look is it, it's kind of this tall, um, grass where around it, it'll have a little more, more area than this. But it'll be kind of a gravel, um, base around it with these, these grasses kind of going up tall. Here's, here's another look with, that does look like it's gravel, but there are these just real tall, spread out, um, grasses that, and just kind of a clean, modern, modern look there in the gravel, but, um, see if I can find another one for you here. It's in gravel. But anyway, it's, it's that, it's that kind of look on that side. But if, if it's, you know, you like grass, that's, that's, that's fine.
If that, if that.
We can do that.
If that's the bush, how do you put grass in between it? In mullet? You almost don't.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. There's not really a, a separation or a border to kind of highlight it.
I personally think the gravel would look better with that type of a, a lawn grass.
And I think you indicated at the beginning, you were doing that because you wanted to give a little bit more privacy than just a flat grass between them.
Uh, right.
I like taller grass between.
Yeah. I mean, we, we still had, we still had this plant in the original plan and that's kind of what it was intended to do is, is be tall and, and, uh, give a little bit of privacy between, between units.
Is the council okay with that change?
I'm okay with the taller grass between them.
Um, I mean, the taller grass is going to be there regardless. It's, it's really is.
Oh, whether we have grass with the base of it?
You know, whether, whether you have gravel or, um, or, uh, you know, grass between those spaces on the freeway side. Um, trying to get the other plant that, that kind of alternates with that Carl Forrester and then one other that, I'm not sure the decal, honestly, but I was going to show that one. It's, it's more of a green. Again, tall, taller plant for privacy, but.
Is there a reason why you're choosing gravel instead of the mulch?
Uh, we could do mulch there. I'd, I'd be, be a great use of that mulch for sure. That's probably better because we have tons of it, literally.
So are we okay with the change?
I'm, I'm okay with the change.
Okay, we've got two for sure.
Well, I'll, I'll propose it as, as gravel and then if, and the next time, um, again, apologize for the repeated coming forths of this. But, uh, um, you can really cast your vote then on it. And if, if you want, we could just make that one change. But, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll revisit the shrubs and, um, the other things. Are there any, any other feedback for us on this?
My only other feedback would be when you come back, you know, if you'll keep the original one that's been approved already and you're proposed and then a breakdown of exactly everything that you're changing. So we, we know exactly what's happening here before we approve it or not.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Then do you have a motion to approve table or deny resolution 21-23?
Mayor, I'll make the resolution that we table, resolution 21-23, the first amendment to the development agreement for Riverside RV Park.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any further comment?
Until such time as it's brought back to us with those changes that were discussed, right? Yes.
Yes. Okay. We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilwoman Zer.
Hi.
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 Motion carries. You know, honestly.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, guys.
You've got your direction correct. You don't need anything more from us.
Nope. Yeah, that's clear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, McKay. Thanks for joining us. All right. Item number 10, resolution 21-24 Davis County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. Davis County is in the process of updating their pre-disaster mitigation plan, having obtained a grant from FEMA. Davis County needs a formal statement of support and agreement to participate from, from the stakeholder agencies, including South Weaver City. Are there questions on this resolution?
Mayor?
Yes.
There were some questions outside of the meeting on this and, uh, I was intending to get in touch with the Davis County Emergency Manager to clarify those. I was not able to do that. Um, there is not an urgency to this necessarily. This could be continued in order to get those answers. Ultimately, the question at hand is that, um, will the participation of the city in the countywide pre-disaster mitigation plan um, impede our own efforts in any way with the brick application that we put forward? Um, we are hopeful to receive that. When we submitted the brick application, there was a brief conversation about, uh, that the county was involved in this process in stages before us. So they're farther along in the process than we are. Um, and they said that that shouldn't be a problem for our application and receiving the funds. But there's still kind of an outstanding question there and, and I was not able to get that answer. And so if that is still an outstanding question for individuals and there's concern, I would recommend that we table this until the next meeting and give me a chance to get those questions answered, to just confirm that those two are not competing interests.
Other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate Dave's explanation. There is some degree of competition. If the city chooses to participate in the county, your projects that you identify through the hazards plan are now in competition with all the other stakeholders and participants and you're ranked accordingly. If you have your own hazards assessment plan and you submit that to the state for project funding, now you're competing with your own number one, where you may have been number 10 on the county's plan. You're number one in your own plan and those go brought forward in the city's and the state's eyes. Your number one plan might be funded where a number 10, it wouldn't even got introduced, um, on the county's plan. So the county, you're competing with other issues that aren't necessarily natural hazards. You could be the competition of new fire trucks or emergency response equipment, where our brick funding that we're preparing to do is for natural hazards. Um, the impacts of an earthquake, a landslide, a hurricane, flood, things of that nature to our infrastructure, where we would want to be able to present our own projects moving forward. So that was the question posed to Dave is, is it one or the other or can we do both? And if we do both, are, can we, can we put our non-hazard, non-natural hazards mitigation program with the county and be part of their plan and have our own natural hazards as our own plan? Or do you have to choose? That's, that was the basis of the question.
All right. Um, any other comments on that?
No, those are my same.
Okay, with that being said, that will entertain a motion?
Table a lot today? Yeah, I make a motion that we table the Davis County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan participation until we get additional information.
I'll second that.
Okay, and that's resolution 21-24.
If you say so.
Any further comment? Let's have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Haversen.
Hi.
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 Motion carries. All right. The next item is a discussion, um, the development approach for the general plan crosshatch. And I want to turn the time over to Dave to lead that.
Uh, I'd first refer, uh, refer you to the item introduction. Uh, ultimately, this is a, this is a conversation tonight. We brought up a couple of weeks ago in reports and the council asked to have some time to think through it a little bit and then bring forward for specific discussion. Um, before we address any specific development on these crosshatch properties, uh, the goal tonight is to simply acknowledge and hopefully understand and talk through, um, the way that the general plan is drafted right now and what the processes are that are available to the city. Um, when the general plan was created and updated, the crosshatch was presented as a way to master plan these larger commercial highway areas and provide an opportunity for a cohesive development. Cohesive in, um, one project, one developer, cohesive in transportation, uh, network within the project area, cohesive in design and feel and, and all of those types of things. And there was a desire at the time for the council and, uh, and, uh, to put that crosshatch together to require two things. A development plan and development agreement. A development plan always comes forward, right? Whether it's one small parcel or, um, a large piece of property, a plan comes forward. A development agreement is not always included in a development proposal. Uh, but in these cases, uh, we said that we wanted a development agreement to come forward as a package, as a, as a component to this overall master planned, uh, area. The, the goal, uh, at the time and the discussion at the time was, was simply one of cohesive development. And, and I think that there was an understanding at the time that we wanted it to come forward as one project, uh, designed together so that we could gain the benefits of that cohesive design and, um, project completion, even if there was phasing plan, but it would be all master planned together. As individual projects have come forward and discussion has taken place, I know that there, um, has been quite a bit of discussion about the various elements of the project. And, um, on all of the properties that have so far brought forward, uh, concept plans. And so before proceeding much farther down the, down the path, uh, we want to just simply pause and have a discussion at the 30,000-foot view of these, the approach. And if we do not do the master plan, development plan approach, where we require those things together on the entirety of the acreage, the only other option is to go through a subdivision process where you, uh, parcel off a piece at a time when, uh, a development is ready. If there's an end user in mind and it wants to, wants to build, um, a kind of a piece at a time. A good example of that process is on the north side of South Weaver Drive, um, where we have the Burley Burger, Little Caesar's building. Um, that all, at one point on that north side was, you know, and still is owned by the same individual. And they're developing it a piece at a time as they have an end tenant who's ready to build. That works very well in, in that case, uh, with the idea that it's all right along that frontage of South Weaver Drive. Once you get deeper and you have a larger parcel that needs a little bit more internal movement, I think that was the, the discussion point, um, during the general plan process. So the council has every opportunity to pick which process they feel is best and pick which approach, um, the council wants to stick with. The decision was made during the general plan update process that we wanted the benefits of the one approach. As we've had rubber meet the road, so to speak, and had development proposals and concepts planned, I think there's been, um, maybe a hesitation on that. And so before, before giving too much more direction to any of these developers that have brought forward concepts, we just need to solidify which, which approach we're using. Uh, the council has the ability to, to choose that as a legislative decision. In the packet, there, there's a little table, um, and it's not an all-inclusive, all-encompassing, uh, table, but it does put a side-by-side comparison to the two approaches. And I think that is the, that is the place that we'd like to, to have the discussion of which approach does the council prefer? Um, recognizing that it's not a right and a wrong decision as much as a, as a discussion about trade-offs. You get certain things when you get a single project, but you also give up certain things when it's a single project. You get certain things when it's a subdivided, uh, process, but you also give up certain things when it's a subdivided process. And so that was the intent of the item summary and the, uh, to tee off this discussion is to present kind of that trade-off. When you pick up one end of the stick, you're picking up the whole stick. And, and so we just need to pick a stick to pick up and then that will help determine which, um, where to go from here on the various project proposals and the parcels that have the crosshatch on it.
And I, I, Dave, I, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and I just want to back up a little bit. And before we get into this, I, I stepped back and I viewed a few of these parcels as if I owned these parcels. We're assuming already that the people who own these properties don't have the right to parcel these properties. If the Pauls want to sell two acres and keep the rest, they have every right to sell two acres and keep the rest. Right now, today, there is nothing this city can do to stop that or this council from them parceling that up and developing it or selling it. We don't have that right to tell them. We did not put in their master plan. We put in their development agreement. We already require a development agreement for anything over, what, two acres? We're really not requiring a whole lot different with this crosshatch than what we are already of a commercial development or any development or a commercial highway development, correct? We require development agreement. The only wording different is development plan. Doesn't say we have to master plan this whole thing. And that's why I took that step back because I was envisioning we, you know, there was some restriction we had on this. If the Stevens want to break this up into 10, 10 small pieces, that's every right they have to do right now. And we can't tell them they can't parcel this thing out. If they want to bring it to us as a master plan that's more cohesive to the city, that's their right and. If they want to bring it to us as a master plan, that's more cohesive to the city, that's their right and we can look at it or do whatever. So I just was taking a step back going, you know, I mean, I wanted to not. I didn't want people thinking we had the ability to tell them they can't do certain things. And, and going too far because that is, it is their property. It's not ours. It's, it's theirs to do with. You know, with the restrictions in the city code, I understand that, but. If they want to parcel it, they have every right to do that already. So. I, I think, I think the bigger decision for me is, is it going to stay commercial highway? As you know, the general plan says. Or are you going to allow some residential development portion of, on that piece of property? And which gets into your, your charge. But it's a little different than saying master plan versus parcel, I think, because we're not requiring. I don't even see where it says we're requiring.
The, on the general plan where it shows the crosshatch.
It says.
Development plan and development agreement required.
Yeah, that could be on two acres or it could be on 12 acres. It doesn't mean it has to be on that whole parcel all as one. They could parcel that off and do a development plan for that two acres. That's their right.
That's an important point.
That, that's where I was going with that is it doesn't have to be 12 acres or 17 acres or whatever 35 that another family owns in the city. It can be on any piece of that. They can go do a quick claim deed tomorrow to Wayne for two acres of it and he can develop it as its truck stop.
A few things wrong with that statement, I think.
And just.
Oh.
Wayne, you're just always at the other end looking at me, so I can say that. But no, I just, I just wanted to make that point that.
I would buy two acres.
I don't want us to assume. Remember what we're talking about and it's what people own and envision it as if it's yours. Because it's something they own and they've paid dearly for it. So. I'll let the discussion begin based on all of that.
Yeah.
It may be helpful just to briefly lay the legal parameters and Blair's touched on this a little bit and I think that was helpful. The current zoning, as I understand it, is agricultural. The general plan labels it as an underlying zone of commercial highway. That's a planned zone, not the current zone. So the, the current zone under which they could apply for entitlements would be agricultural. The contemplated zone was commercial highway. The application that's been submitted to the city is a rezone request and the request is to rezone the property as a. Combination of commercial highway and R seven density on the property.
I would, I would amend that one statement to, there's not a specific application at this point. As you look at the, and we're kind of mixing conversations just a little bit here, but. For one of these pieces of property with a separate discussion on a development agreement as the next item on the agenda. That anticipates, right? What, a number of steps? And so one of those would be application that would have to take place based on concept that has been discussed. So ultimately it becomes one proposal on any of these properties as currently outlined. And so a development agreement as one of the pieces would have to state that a rezone is part of the development process. It is not saying that that has already taken place. It is just anticipating, right? In its draft form that at a future date, those steps would have taken place, though they have not yet. Does that make sense?
And then I read the development agreement the same way Blair does, that the only thing it states is quote, development plan and agreement required. There are things you can imply from that, but not anything that's stated directly. And the way I've read it. Is it's implying that for any zoning other than agricultural or commercial highway. That a development agreement would be the next logical step for the city to take in doing that.
Okay. Are there comments from the council? Thank you, Blair, for yours.
I'll jump in. Okay, so, and I appreciate that clarification to Jamie and your comments, Blair, because I have similar thoughts on that. So. As I look at this plan or this table rather. I feel like for us to think long term for South Weber, that a master plan. That we have discussed would make the best end product for our city. It makes the most sense to do it all cohesively. You get the same type of construction materials, everything matches, everything's complementary, traffic flow is better. So I feel like long term, the master plan approach would be the best one for us to consider.
Thank you, councilman Petty. Other comments?
Yeah, I'll jump in. The intent of the crosshatch, having worked with the mixed use committee and getting to the general plan. Was just that to have a vision for the entire colored area, if you will, I'm not going to say partial. And Blair's right, they could be broken up into one, two, three, whatever subdivisions they wanted, but the idea was for that, that partial to have a plan. A vision going into it and an agreement to hold that vision in place for successive owners. That's, it's taken on a different life, you know, as to how it was brought back to us. And it was using other aspects of our zones, which was not intended. And even I got caught up with, oh, okay, if we need a compromise to have commercial, we're going to have to put some. I guess with the word anchor. Development in there to make the commercial run. And so we're putting it into a place to have a compromise. And I've gotten to the place where it's like, you know what? The general plan was intended to have the vision of commercial there. If commercial's not going to fly for nine acres, then maybe it'll fly for one acre or two acres. But the plan was to have commercial there. I wish we could start over and amend the general plan as listed earlier, just take the crosshatch now and let it. Let the owner bring forth what they want. If they want to rezone it into a residential. Then that's their right to bring it forth as a residential and they can bring it forward, go through the process as they seem fit. You know, but the, the vision of the general plan was to have a commercial. That's one of our last areas to do that. But it's their, you know, their choices to have one of the, how they want to do that. From my perspective, the master plan's not working. And so even though I think it was a good idea, it's not working in concept. So I think we just, we go back to the subdivision process and let them bring it forth. As they want and we live with the outcome. We hope they would do as Dan Murray has done with the, the Burley Burger and the State Farm and. Those areas and they maintain the motif and they maintain that concept flow, but they do it as they need it. But, so I guess I'm not arguing against, but I'm arguing at a different point of view and I think the subdivision would be the way to go. I also think we probably need to amend the general plans. We don't have this argument or discussion, sorry, in the future on the other property. Just pull it off and just leave it as projected commercial highway and let the codes determine what can go there.
Thank you. Other comments?
So just to kind of piggyback off Wayne there is the mixed use committee. Wayne summarized it very well. I, I personally feel that it would be better to subdivide these out simply just because of the information that we've been given regarding the grocery store, regarding our, our commercial property. You guys know me, if I've, I've spent all weekend researching other people's codes regarding cities that, that have master plans and have development agreements and. My, my biggest. I can't think of the word. My biggest addition, like my biggest advice. My biggest suggestion, thank you, would be that if we do choose to go forward with this master plan. We need to codify it. Every, I looked at Ogden, Harriman, Draper, South Jordan. I had a resident that sent me Park Cities. Their master planning, it's, it's 15 pages of code. Going through exactly what happens and gives it back to the land use authority, our planning commission, which really is this meeting that we had in March 9th is where I, I really feel that. Why does this keep happening? That's not my mic, but anyway. That. We, we were, we were out of our lane technically and I, and I know that it, it's, it's a land use decision. And it should be based on code. So. I have a lot of notes here of things that are included typically in these master plan development agreement areas. If, if that's some, if that's the council's will is, is to continue master planning it, then I would suggest that it needs, needs to be codified. So it's clear, it's gone through the correct process of the planning commission and then to the council for approval. However, I am in favor of, of removing the crosshatch properties. I just, I think that it works great in theory, but in practice it did not.
Thank you. Other comments?
So my, my comments are similar to a lot of things that are already been stated. I mean, the master plan was a great idea. And if we can still do it, you know, that would be ideal. The information we've gotten as we've been moving forward. At least for, you know, the one property is, it doesn't make sense to make it fully commercial highway. And so therefore we'd have to have some sort of an anchor that would bring in and make it a business. Opportunity that would make sense. You know, and I think I'm leaning more to the subdivision side of things as well. But with the goal that we try to make it consistent and cohesive and, and try to do that, but. You know, if we don't have, you know, I don't know, maybe Sherry is, but we don't have a planner that can be out there pulling in all these things. We turn to a developer and says, you know, what, what do you want to bring? If we had an active group that was actually master planning and going out and, and bringing in stuff that would fit in these properties, you know. Maybe that would work, but that's not, I, I don't see that within our city and, and so. I lean more towards the subdivision side.
Okay. Blair?
I, I don't, I don't know where to begin actually, because we're still going to have development agreements. Anything over two acres. So everybody knows it's still going to be hit or make you trying to avoid this thing where we got to create rules for everybody. But we're still going to have development agreements when this happens, even if it's parcel. But leaving the crosshatches on there, it doesn't matter to me whether it's on there or not on there. We can just say no. That doesn't, that doesn't bother me one bit to just not believe the crosshatches on there. There's no reason to go open up and have public areas and all that to remove the crosshatches on there. We can be big kids and just say no. So the. Idea, we're still going to get presented with master plans when these pieces are, that's what, that's what developers are going to do. They're, they're going to try to buy the whole thing and they're going to try to present a master plan. So it's still going to be presented to the city. I'm okay with it being parcel. I just, I think it, yeah, if we leave it as underlying commercial highway, I'm good with that. Because that's, that's where we were headed with, with the discussion. So. If a developer still wants to present a master plan. And that's his right to present it with some R seven and his right to present it with some commercial highway. It doesn't matter to me. So I don't all approve or disapprove whatever's presented. So. I think, I don't, I don't know how to state that, yes, I just want to go to the subdivision route or the master plan route because. We're going to get all sorts of different proposals. And, you know, basically I'm okay with the, the process the way it is. I think we can give them a development agreement that restricts things. Or the, the property owner has the right to parcel it and go commercial highway in separate subdivisions. So. I think the way it is, is going to be the way that those properties get presented to us, no matter which way we decide here. It's my personal opinion because they're trying to sell the whole entire piece, not just parts of it. So. I think we're going to still be listening to the same conversation either way we decide. If we want the crosshatches off there, that's fine. You're still going to get the same presentations back to you. That's my personal opinion. So. I, I do have a comment. Later on, but I, I also think that to avoid some of these situations, I think the committees are a proper way to review these development agreements. So that we're not dragging other people through the mud. We can avoid a lot of things and a lot of just curmudgeon issues, easy changes. I think that is the proper way to do it. So.
Mayor, can I mention something really quickly?
Yeah.
You know, even if the, not commission, even if the council decides to continue down the subdivision route. There are still things that you can write into code. Like councilwoman Albert suggested, there are things that you can write into code. So even if they do go the subdivision route and parcel it one at a time. There are things that you can require as far as design elements and things like that. That, that will allow the city to get a more cohesive project design, even if a developer chooses to parcel everything out. You can, there are things that you can put into place with a subdivision approach to it. That allow for some of those things that you traditionally benefit from a master plan on. And mostly that's related to things like architectural design of buildings and things like that. So even if they come in one at a time. You're still going to benefit from having more of a cohesive design if you have some of those standards in place. So you can, it's kind of a middle ground between the two. But that is one possibility that the city can entertain.
Well, I, I feel that, you know, based on what council member Haversen says, and I do agree that we'll probably continue to get master plan developments and things. That's all the more reason to codify this. We, we don't have a process. We don't have anything written down. We kind of just make up the process as we go. As we have seen. So we need to codify it and have an actual process and, and, you know, like I said, these, these. Processes in these other cities that have dealt with this master planning, they're, they're extensive to the point that we could still get quite a bit of what, exactly what we want, but it's not. It's all left in the process in the correct way. Going to the land use authorities through PC code or through a code revision, you know, accepted by the council. Everyone goes to the exact same process. It doesn't matter if this council moves on, if our city manager moves on, it, it's clear, it's laid out. It's right there and everybody knows exactly the process and it was done the correct way. So if, if master plans are something we're going to continue to get or even development agreements, because that's another thing that most cities do have codified. We have nothing on development agreements. So if that's still, those are still two items that are present in our situation. Then I just really urge us to look into codifying this type of process.
Haley, if I may, I agree completely as far as beefing up our code, but I. I somewhat disagree with the idea that there's not a process. And that this process is out of alignment with other developments that have come to the city. And it goes to the point that, that Wayne made as far as. A property owner has the right to come and make a request. And, you know, we've talked about that a little bit, but whether the general plan says. CH or whether the general plan had said mixed use or whether the general plan had been portioned CH and others. On any of these properties, a property owner has the right to come and request something outside of that. If this did not have a crosshatch on it and staff had received a phone call and said, here's my concept. Staff would have said that is not in alignment with general plan because it has the, has, you know, other elements outside of the, the projected zoning. And we've seen this many times where they say, well, I, I'd still like to see if the council would entertain that. And the reason for that is the act of zoning is the legislative decision. Of what are the property rights there for development? The general plan is not the action that grants that. That's not the legislative moment that grants those rights. And so the general plan is, is an important document that informs those zoning decisions. But that process is still yet to play out. But the process is there and it would be no different than any other development. But the process is there and it would be no different than any other development. So I, I hope.
Yes, yes, thank you.
We're making it up as we go because we do have a standard. That goes through concept.
That's not, I meant, I didn't mean exactly those steps. I meant as far as the details of this development agreement where we are making it up. We are making up what our residential will be. We are making up what our building height will be. Those are all within a flexible legislative review. Which in other cities that I have studied is written into, it's codified and it gives parameters of the planning commission. And it usually, you know, there's some variance to that where our land use authorities are able to make those decisions. Which is then recommended to the council, but in this situation, we have a council that is making parameters. That is then going to the planning commission. So it's causing a little bit of confusion, I think. I just think that the process of the details of. Thank you for clarifying, not the order of when the property owner comes and things, but. The details of the master planning, the details of the development agreement. If those are codified, it gives the land use authority where the, the parameters they can work within.
You're, you're absolutely right. And because our code does not have some of those details. The master plan idea, the development plan and development agreement is the chance for the council to create those parameters. When you talk about having it codified, that's simply the council making that decision before the concept comes forward, right? And then the land use authority, the, the planning commission and, and staff goes through that process with those parameters in place. What we've created here, and again, the intent of that crosshatch wasn't to make the zoning designation or to even turn it into mixed use, right? The, the crosshatch was simply to think about it holistically, right? As one project that came forward. But the process would be the same as far as. The land use authority takes their direction from the legislative body who puts that code in place. So again, I agree a hundred percent as far as beefing up the code and, and making sure that's clear. In this case, that decision needs to be made and that's why it's at the city council level now. So that the parameters of the development proposal and the plan. And the rezone application, those essentially three pieces, the rezone request and application, the project application. And a development agreement all go hand in hand and. They're not all put together yet in any of these projects because it's still at that concept level. And it's not specifically codified what those parameters are. So. We're, we're kind of working.
Speaking the same thing, your, your answer is longer than mine, but we're, I think we're saying the same.
That seems to be my MO in some.
Any other comments?
I just, just to the comment that in theory this works and in practice it doesn't work for us. We haven't done it yet. So I would just refute that because we haven't done it. That's why we're here.
My, my intention was that was what the code committee or the mixed use committee's intentions were of as far as putting it on there. In practice, we're good. In theory, it didn't turn, at least not the way that I understood it. And I know I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity we have to, to talk about this because I. I know even at the time that we approved the general plan that I said. This process of, of these cross hatches, it's not clear what's happening. And that's what I mean by the. In practice, it was, it didn't carry out quite the way that we, at least in my brain, it was not intended this way.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
You know, I, I think when I originally during the general plan and we put the cross hatches on there. I mean, I don't know that we even intended for it to be. What's coming forward as mixed use. I know mixed use is a bad word. But we can still leave the crosshatch on and have a development agreement for commercial highway. And leave it a straight commercial, and that would be an awesome plan and even let them to do it in phases because then it is a cohesive development. That's why I don't want to take the cross hatches off. I mean, it doesn't say we have to change the underlying zone or the projected land use. It doesn't say that anywhere. It doesn't say we have to say yes to a residential component of that. It's just saying a development agreement and the development plan. That's what it says. So again, I'm, I, I like the idea of a master plan. So. But again, we're not, there's nothing in place right now telling an owner they can't do it otherwise. So. I, I don't think, I think we're, it's, it's a mute point to try to, to change it. We, if we, I think if we don't like the developments in front of us, then we just say no.
I think if we don't intend to offer a residential component, then we might as well just codify that and save our developers the time of coming to us. Asking for it when they know.
Where does it say on our general plan that we expect a residential component to that? It doesn't say that. It doesn't say mixed use.
You're right.
Development agreement, development plan on a future land use for commercial highway. That's what it says.
Right, exactly. But then we had a, a presentation come forward with a residential component that I think kind of threw us all off a little bit and we all were confused what we should do. So that's where I feel a little bit more direction would help all of us, the community, the planning commission, the city council, the developers and staff.
No, no offense. I, I, I think if it, in my mind, if, if it's something that comes forward and it's a better thing for our city. I think we're all, that's why we make a legislative decision. That's what we were elected to do. We can make that change. If we don't like it, we say no. That's what else we got elected to do. We, I don't need someone telling me those parameters. In my opinion. Cause we would be the ones making those parameters anyway. We are the ones that would have to approve that code. So we, it's two pieces of property. It's not that big a deal. Why go write a, spend weeks and weeks and weeks for two pieces of property?
Well, it is a big deal when it's seventeen acres and ten acres and you're talking about seventy houses or a hundred and forty houses.
As the underlying zone. Period. It's done.
And there you go. And that's where we're back to where we're at.
Just to maybe chime in a little bit.
It's a good thing there's these plastic barriers between.
Well, there's three of them, so I'm down here. Just listening to the conversation and trying to develop some thought process here, I think. Troubling me or I'm throwing in on is we're combining several administrative and legislative steps in this whole. Development plan process. I don't disagree with what Blair said or what, or Haley is saying. But what was presented, if we want to use the example of the Paul property was a zone change. Two different zone changes on top of a concept plan that was bypassing a public hearing. Which would normally go to the planning commission for the zone change before we would approve. And so. Some aspects of the development plan were out of step with the, the normal administrator process. And I think that's what we're getting caught up with, or maybe the public's getting caught up with is that. We're putting together a development agreement that projects or purports to have. Two different zone changes for this particular property. And yet neither one of those, and put agreement in place, but neither one of those had gone back and been vetted in a public hearing. With the administrative body, which is the planning commission. So I hear what Haley's saying about codifying, although codifying, codified tomato, tomato. I had a light in the mood. So I, I don't have a solution here. I'm just, I'm just kind of put. In, in the development aspect of it. I mean. If we wanted to do it in steps, it's like, okay, we want to come back and we want to do a zone change. Well, first we want to, want to subdivide the property. You know, lot one, lot two, and then we want to do a zone change. So lot one, lot two. And then you put a development for each one of those zones, you know, taking what Blair's thought was and move those forward. Those would be the steps going forward, but each one of them, there's a check and a balance. Yep. With the way we've gone through this was we dumped it all up front. And then if we put a development agreement with a development plan together and then give it to the planning commissioner, like what he wants to do with this, already made the legislative decision. So I think we need to take a step, several steps back and say, if this is the concept plan, you've mentioned yourself. You have a call from a developer and they say, here's your idea. And you say, well, doesn't meet the plan. Well, we want the, the council's opinion. Where does the planning commission come in on that? When do they get to be our legis, our land use authority and give us a recommendation? Why does everything have to come to the top? And now we're wrestling with this and then we have to make a decision. Now it's going to go through the process. It's almost like we're making a decision before it's gone through the, the, the process. So almost like, you know what, developers? Take your concept to the planning commission. I'll let them give you some feedback. Don't always go to the top. So I'm, reminds me of my childhood, you know? Sister didn't like what dad said, so sister went to mom and, you know, got the answer she wanted. So anyway, that's just my take on what we're talking about.
Don't they have a right to do that though?
So we, right. And yes, the short answer is yes, but we had. Typically we do take that to the planning commission first. If you look back in history, that has been the case. The only reason we're doing it with the crosshatch properties. And we did originally take those to planning commission, those that came forward, if you remember right. But that. Because that legislative element of development agreement. Somewhat informs the creation of the plan. And this I think is, is maybe a miscommunication on my part and I, and I apologize for that. But all of these pieces will still go through the standard public hearing process. And approval will not take place until, to use your phrase, has been vetted through that process. And it is a public process and, and all of these components are, are public, right? All of this has been, is happening. So that it can go through that public process. A rezone application would be required. Again, the development agreements would have to address zoning. But it's been stated by this body in the past meetings that that decision ultimately is not made until the whole package is seen. And so yes, we're working a piece at a time and talking about components and things like that. And ultimately I do apologize for the, you know, that misunderstanding and miscommunication as far as the, the process goes. I guess I just haven't been clear as I've tried to state that before, that. This still will go through all of those steps of a rezone application, a development. Public hearings at the planning commission for preliminary plan, for site plan, for rezone. All, all of that still is yet to take place. So I apologize for that.
I think concern is like, we say, okay, yeah, we'd be willing to entertain a hundred ERUs. You know, before that process takes place, then that's, that puts us in a hard position. And that puts the planning commission in a hard position.
Sure. I don't disagree.
Are there other comments? Have we come to a decision about how we want to?
I'll just add one comment and, you know, I'm. One of the newer ones with this process, but I remember it being stated that. The original process of going through the planning commission and all that, they would go through a lot of effort, a lot of money, whatever. And then when it got to the city council, it'd be shot down. And so one of the options was to get feedback from the city council so they didn't have to go through iteration after iteration after iteration. And so I think that's one of the reasons why we're in this dilemma. Is because it wasn't working very well the way it was. Stated by code. We've tried this other method. It's not really that much cleaner and clearer. So anyway. I don't have a resolution. It just helps me understand, you know, where we are and maybe it's something different than that, but I think that's why we tried this approach. Was to see if we could at least agree and give some guidance, but then it kind of. Got more complicated.
That was the one point I forgot to bring up was, and Quinn reminded me of that was. We also didn't want to, and I think it was all of us agreed that we didn't want to go forward down the path of rezoning. A larger or a substantial piece of property without a development agreement and a development plan that we could revert back out of that zoning, if we will all remember that conversation. So if we go down just the parcel and zoning, it will get rezoned without a development agreement and be rezoned to whatever can be in that rezone. So we're opening ourselves back up for that too.
So I think what I'm hearing is, well, I don't know. Does someone want? Someone want to make a statement? That encompasses everybody. I, I think that. There is some consensus. Give or take that. We don't. I don't, I don't even dare say it. So I don't know that we should take the crosshatching off. But I don't know. That we also want to make it just purely. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't, a subdiv, or subdivided.
Mayor, if I may ask a question. This is a discussion item is the discussion with the end result to give direction to staff to. Whatever we've decided they either change.
Right.
General plan or the zoning on that, not the zoning.
Yes, it's, it's not a resolution.
Or not a process. Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Well then, if that's the case, I will just restate. Hearing all of the, the discussion back and forth, reasons for, reasons not, and we're going to end up with a development agreement. Anyways, I still maintain that I would prefer to do the master plan approach.
Okay.
Mayor David may kick me under the table. But where it's a discussion item, I don't know that the council need take any action. Other than the feedback that you've already provided through your discussion. The way I view it, there would be no formal action to result from this unless. A member of the city council or a member of the planning commission decided. To take up an action to amend the general plan. Or the developer made some type of application before the city. And where neither of those have happened, I don't know that anything other than your feedback is required on the agenda.
We don't need to come to any kind of consensus or anything. It's just if somebody wants to. Correct. It would have to be three members, right? That would want to amend the general plan though, in order for that to go forward. The discussion.
Functionally, functionally, not a lot will change necessarily as already been said. In the idea that if a developer brings forward a concept for the entirety of the parcel. And it includes elements that are not. Part of the general plan, staff will say that is not allowed by the general plan. And we'll give them that direction that that's not allowed. If they make a request that they want to. Do something outside of the general plan and go through that process. Then we would go, we would direct them through that process of going to the planning commission for a recommendation or not. And, and follow it through that way. But as Jamie said, the, the direction. The direction and feedback isn't necessarily a, do we change the general plan or not? That, that's not the purpose necessarily. Because the general plan again informs zoning decisions, but ultimately this body makes zoning decisions. And that's the moment when. Development rights are granted. It's based on what is the zone on the ground. And for the crosshatch areas, there's a projected land use, but that's not the current land use. The current zoning is what a development. If a developer came in with a project on the current zoning, then that process, that application process would go through to just develop. It's when there's a project that is outside of zoning. That the rezone conversation and the legislative decision of that rezone takes place. In the past, the council has also. Got a philosophy that has been stated and applied. That a rezone. Does not take place unless it is accompanied by a plan. That. To just simply provide a rezone application for a parcel of any size without a plan that accompanies it. The council has in the past not rezoned. They have declined those rezone requests until there is a plan. The rezones that have taken place in the recent history have all included a revision clause. That the project that is brought forward that accompanies that rezone. If it is not built in a certain timeframe, then the zoning would revert back to the prior, to prior zoning. I say all that with the. With the purpose of. I say all that with the, with the purpose of, functionally, the process will still look very similar to what it is in that a developer could bring forward a concept that is outside of the current zoning. For example, bringing forward a desire to put residential on a current agriculture zone with commercial highway as the underlying projected land use zone. And they can make that request, and the council simply has to consider that legislatively, whether they would accept that or not.
Does that go to the Planning Commission first?
We can tell them to go to the Planning Commission first.
I just didn't know what, if there was a proper procedure?
It should go to the Planning Commission first, yes.
But if they request beyond that to go to council first, then...
Well, we will take, we will take them to the Planning Commission first. And if you remember, we did that with the projects that have come forward with concept on both of these properties. And those then came to the council after. And again, that functionally doesn't change a whole lot, but that is the process. And that is, that is a process outlined by state code, and that's how that works. If somebody wants to do something outside the current zoning, that is the decision-making process that ultimately the council, the council is the decision-making body to do anything, to change zoning. Sorry, that's what I'm stating.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, do we need to have more discussion on that, or do we just...
Need to? I don't know, I think we've gone around quite a bit on that, but...
Yeah, yes, we have. So are there any other comments on this item?
I guess if we leave it at this, then what?
If we leave it as it is right now, then...
I mean, if we leave this discussion here, then what?
Then the council has to make a decision when projects come forward of whether or not they will allow a zoning change. That becomes a legislative decision about zoning change. And for the crosshatch properties that bring in a large concept over the entire parcel, that's no different than whether it was subdivided off and there was a half that size or a third that size parcel or project that they brought in and said, here's my desire to put something outside of the current zoning and/or projected land use zoning. The process would be the exact same, but the council just has to make those decisions as they come.
It would be the same with or without the crosshatch. That's, that was my whole point, it doesn't change.
I feel like that if we go, and recognizing that property owners could subdivide at any time, as Blair mentioned. But if we went the subdivision route, then we lose the ability for these things that people are, that all of us love about South Weber, is this community, right? And if we have a master plan that allows us for community space in there, if we subdivide it, that will not happen. So I want to make that clear, too, that if we just say, all right, we'll just subdivide everything, then the likelihood of us getting a community space as part of a development is very small.
Sort of, I'd be right in saying that leaving the crosshatch on gives us more options.
Yes.
Can I get some feedback?
Can I amend that? More is probably not the right answer, different. There are different options, to the idea of trade-offs, there are different things that you get with that than with the other process. So I, more or better is, I think, a little bit subjective.
I just want to take a step back, I'm sorry just to forlabor this conversation, but, you know, you're just pontificated a position, and, you know, and Blair echoed that, the process wouldn't change. It's a legislative decision for zone changes, I get that, but that's the end decision. You know, for me to want to make a legislative decision, I want to have a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And that's the part I'm trying to get out, is we're skipping that part. You know, they're bringing a concept plan, and you want to put a development agreement with that, that has all these zone changes. And if we agree to that, it's almost like rubber stamping. But that's where I'm getting confused, at what point in time, if they want to come with this, all these plans, these zone changes, shouldn't it go to the Planning Commission? Shouldn't they vet it? Shouldn't they have a public hearing? And shouldn't that then weigh in on their decision? And then they can recommend to us, the legislative body, hey, we think this is a good change, despite what the general plan says or not. And then we can weigh in and make that decision. But if we're doing the development agreement with a plan, and we say, yeah, we like that, we think that's a good development agreement, good plan, here, Planning Commission, you go run with it. We basically just handcuffed them, and handcuffed the public. And I think that's, that's the problem I'm having a hard time with, is I don't disagree with what you and Blair were saying, but I think it's out of step.
I think I have a remedy for you. And, and here's the change, if you're trying to identify where's the change. The change is that when a developer says, I'd like to do something outside the zoning, and here's my concept, then we would suggest, or we would stay, then your process is to submit a rezon application. You submit a rezon application with your concept, and that would go through a public process that is defined by a rezon application process that would go forward to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission would have, not a full plan, but they would have a concept plan. And, and they would then make a recommendation on a yes or no for a zone change. And then that legislative decision would come forward to the council for a zone change.
That shouldn't cost an arm or a leg, you know, going back to Quinn's good point, that, you know, they spend all this money and they come up to us and we just say, no, it shouldn't cost the developer that much to put it to that process, right? We haven't asked them to go through and give us final documents or anything of that nature.
The only thing I would say to that is, we have asked for a preliminary plan to come with a zone change. So we have asked them to put in a lot of time and money to create a plan. We have not done it at the concept stage, that's the difference. That's the difference right there, is we, in the past, have requested...
But just a concept plan.
But if we said just a concept plan, not full architectural drawings, not full renderings, not full any of that, just bring forward the concept with your zone, or your rezon. But we would have to back off of this idea of we have to have the plan nailed down before we grant rezones.
That's reasonable.
That's, I think, a difference.
Isn't that what happened with the lofts?
Yeah, that's why we changed it in the first place.
We were stuck with what the rezon was.
But we approved the rezon, right? I'm not following you.
What Dave's saying is, if they come with a rezon and we say, okay, we accept that rezon, and then they find any use in that zone that they can abide by, that's what we get.
But not if we tie it to the concept plan.
That's my point.
That's the point of the concept, we didn't have a concept plan with the lofts.
That's my point.
And the point was to tie it to the concept plan, so we can, and with the revert clause to get out of that when the rezon was made.
Yes.
And, and the one, I mean, this was, I mean, when we talk about the one proposal we're talking about, it did go through Planning Commission, maybe not with the current members. Planning Commission reviewed this twice.
Okay.
And gave recommendation that they liked it. I mean, it did go through some steps, this just didn't come straight to us. So where, where that's been missed, I don't quite, I mean, yes, it didn't go through a public hearing, it didn't go, but it, it did get recommended that they liked the concept. Maybe it was a different Planning Commission, but it did go through those steps. It did not go through all the formality, but that was some of our choice, because we wanted to nail down what we would accept, so...
Well, and I feel like the Planning Commission didn't like it, they told them to go back to the drawing board, which is when the developers, in frustration, I think, a little bit, and duly so, were like, what, what are you guys going to let us have here?
You're right.
So I just, I would like to get feedback from each council member regarding adding this to some code. Because a lot of this could be written, I mean, a matter of, again, as Blair said, it would go through the Planning Commission, it would come to us. But it gives us all the ability to have this really hit everything that we want. You know, just looking at some things, you know, you can, you can put in the landscape plans, you can put in this site plan, the architectural plans. How much open space will be required? An amount of density with a percentage that the Planning Commission could go up to or down to with a cap on it, so it's all within reason. Maximum building heights, I mean, I mean, there's just, there's just pages of things that we could do that would protect us, that would help us prevent what happened, you know, with these developers coming to us and us saying, no, sorry, and starting all over in that frustration, it's all written there in code. It's been through the public hearing process, it's been through the Planning Commission process, it's been through the city council process. And we all know what we're going to get, because we helped create it. Not on a whim in a council meeting during a presentation, but it's been in code. And I'd really like to get some feedback on if that's something that we think we should do, both for master planning and for development agreements, which, as I stated, most cities have processes for this in their code. And we do not have anything codified, codified, whatever, on either of those two things.
To Haley's point, if I may add, I think there was some concern at one point, and maybe still is, I'm sure still is, with our current allowed uses, what's permitted, what's conditional in all of our commercial zones and even our residential zones. And thus, we started the process of the code committee looking at that. My, my impression tells me that if the council was more comfortable with the allowed uses in our zoning, then the idea of a rezon is not so scary.
Yeah, that was the point of doing what we're doing.
And we're already in process with the commercial highway zone. That has already been noticed, it's gone through the Planning Commission. It's at the Planning Commission level right now, they continued the item in their last meeting and are continuing to work on a recommendation of approved and allowed uses in the commercial highway zone. The code committee has already worked, and I'm stealing Wayne's thunder for his report, but the code committee has already looked at all of the zoning and all of the allowed uses, both permitted uses and conditional uses in all of the zoning. And that is very near coming forward through the process to be changed. And, and maybe that's the missing piece, maybe not the only missing piece, right? Because there's additional layers there that, that I think Haley is spot on about. But I do think that once we can talk through the allowed uses in the various zones, then that idea of zoning takes on a different perspective or a different flavor.
I am all about having more clear parameters in the development agreement process. That would definitely be a benefit to the city. I have two questions about it, logistically, they're not negative, they're just legitimate questions. What does that do for people when they have these, bring these developments, we're reviewing it, they're still with whatever our current code is, we can't put a moratorium on it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, well, I'll just say the one, that, that was my concern, because it may take us, I mean, I don't know how long it would take us to put all of that code in. I think it would be fairly, I mean, it would take time, but it would be simple to look at some of these codes that other cities have, look at it and say, yes, applicable, no, no, and then we could even adopt a rough draft of that and then go back and make changes as a code committee. My fear is, I don't want this process, if we adopt this, for it to take another two years, six months, eight months, whatever. And then we have concerns about things that happen now that we can't change. It's too little, too late if someone's coming forth right now.
And those are, those are valid questions. If we put something, do we have the six months that, like we do on commercial highway currently with our planning commission, once we're changing code? Like, for right now, we're, we're amending the CH zones, that gives us six months.
Right, so once it is noticed to the public that the council is considering code changes, then the council has 180 days, or the city... And the new code applies from that notice.
So just to cut you off there, my, my thoughts to what you're saying is, you're right, it may not be in time for these developments that are coming forward to us now, and we're going to have to work with those with the parameters we have set. But it's better late than never. Let's just go ahead and get started on it, so that if this doesn't work out, or whatever happens with this, we're going on it, and for whatever future developments, the process is in place. Because I think we're, we're so focused on what's happening right now and how it won't matter to right now, let's just get it going for what happens down the road.
Haley, to your question, I really can't give you an honest answer, not knowing what those other cities' codes say. I guess I'd have to take a read of it and see what's going on. I'm not excited about generating new code if our current codes comply, or our current codes guide us to what we need to do. A, for example, would be if they want to put in a commercial highway in a portion, then the commercial highway code zone should apply. If they want to put in R7, that zone should apply. I don't know if we need additional code to make that happen, I think we have the codes in place. And we just apply them to the zones or the parcels that they want to, they want to apply them to. But I'm not going to say it's a bad idea, because I don't know what you're, I don't know what you know. I haven't read what you've read, so I can't really say one way or the other. So I'd like to take a look at that and see if there are some aspects of that that could be pulled into a current section of our code, or if we need to write a new chapter. But from my perspective, I think we have the zones in place, apply them as the landowner wishes to apply them in a master development, I'm not going to say master plan, but in a development plan concept, and let it rule. Right now, 75 units on the acres that they are proposing doesn't work, it doesn't work with our code. It doesn't meet the ingress and egresses and things of that nature. And one of those things, just talking about ingress and egresses, that's all for residential. And now you've got this concept out there, and I'm skipping ahead, but you've got this concept out here, you've got commercial and all the traffic it presents in front of residential behind it. And that complicates the amount of ingress and egress and the traffic patterns in an emergency, and our code doesn't address that. Those are the holes that I'm thinking we need to, it has to be addressed as you start going through these development agreements. And that's where the development agreement has dividends, if you have time to, to look through those type of things.
I, I do have them all saved, and if you want to be a big fat nerd like I am and spend your Friday nights reading other cities' codes, I will happily send it to every city council member. But I really do think that there is value in seeing, especially cities that are dealing with this. Cities that are not only dealing with it now, but have been dealing with it and are prepared for it, because they've more than likely learned the hard way.
I will be a nerd, but I'll do it on Thursday night.
Thursday network.
I think there's a lot to be learned from looking at others, you know, I'm like Wayne, I, I hate to agree to something without knowing exactly what it is. Put a whole bunch of code to these properties that have so much open space and so much of this and that. We're, we're drawing boxes that limit what we're, we're doing. So I'd like to see some examples, you know, and understand what we really have, you know, before, before moving forward on that.
Okay, are there any further comments? We need to move on.
Mayor, I do have one, I, I will need to be excused at 10 after 9:00. I need to take my son down to the airport, he's leaving on his mission tonight. So I will have to be excused.
Okay.
Wish him good luck for us.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Sotekus. All right, let's move on to the Pall Gateway Development Agreement Draft. Do you just, you want to address that quickly, Dave?
Sure, this is, this document that was presented is a draft. There is nothing set in stone about this document, it is a working, a working document in, in all respects. But it is based off of previous conversations, and that, that's really, that's really it. I know that you've looked at it, I know that there's a number of pieces of it that, that need to be discussed and need to be ironed out. If the previous conversation informed this discussion at all, hopefully it did to some, to some level. But the, the, the agreement is up for conversation, consideration, and all of the aspects of it in there. Some of them, you'll notice, are blanks or placeholders, right? Because this is a draft. Because this is a, a draft. And again, it is one piece of a larger, of a larger puzzle and larger proposal that would come forward, um, that would require rezone on the parcels that, or the pieces that it addresses. It is not attempting or not trying to uh create new code as much as apply those, those zones. Although there are, um, there are some gaps there as Wayne discussed and mentioned that a development agreement can kind of bridge the gap for, um, and that. That's it. The, the committee that previously was tasked to, to work on this, uh, when they brought something back, um, this was a month or so ago. The council said that they wanted to review it together. The committee did not look at this, uh, prior. This went directly into the hands of the entire city council to review. And so that's the purpose today is to act essentially as a full council committee on this development agreement.
My question is, would the committee like the opportunity to review this before the whole council hacks on it? Or are you willing to take all the comments right now?
It is a discussion item. There's no action on this one.
Which I mean, would they like to have an opportunity to, to?
I, I mean, I, I, and, and Dave, forgive me. But as in the minutes that we just approved, it said it will come back to the committee for review, not the council. And in the audio, it said it would come back to the committee. And to make my point, as I said earlier, I don't even think this would be before us to, for discussion item, if it would've come back to the committee. Because in our last city council, not the emergency one, but the one before, uh, with the comments that were made, three of the council members were not in favor anymore of 75 units. It was two to three. So this committee, I was, and I was the opposite. I'm, I'm saying we were, the committee was taking back the wishes of the council, not what was my personal opinion, what was the consensus of this council, and it would not have been at 75. So I don't know if this even would be before us because I don't know if the developer would have taken it and moved forward with it after, after that. It would have probably been at 42. And it would have had a lot of different language on the zoning, um, based on the comments from the rest of the council. So I agree that I think committees would work better in this process so that it's not wasting our time. And uh, yes, I think it should go back to council. I, I, I lean towards making a motion to move it to another agenda. If we wanna discuss it, I don't know that it's a long discussion, but I, I mean, I'll let everybody make that decision. So I won't, I won't make that motion, Wayne. I appreciate the opportunity though.
I, I think the committee should have an opportunity to weigh in on it and bring something back that they're comfortable with. But I have a few hell knows in, in some of the paragraphs, but I'd be happy to share those with you either offline or on public. But um, in any case, I, I think it should go back to the committee and let them have an opportunity to take a stab at it and bring it forth.
I have some comments I would like to make. I wrote them up. So I wouldn't forget anything. Did you guys see him nodding his head like, yeah, we know you do? Um, okay, so I just, I wanted, my thoughts are clear and concise so everybody under, can understand both my council members and the public and property owners, everything where I'm at. So, um, so some history that I'm sure none of us need to remind it of, but I want on the public record so it's clear why I'm choosing the decision I am today, which is more feedback and not decision. And I have spoken with many, many residents over the last few months, and I just, I want to take this time to make my stance very clear. In 2019, as a citizen, I learned that the city's general plan was underway. And in the general plan, I read the following. Participation and input from residents are imperative to achieve a comprehensive plan that is reflective of the overall attitudes and desires of the residents. It has been the city's goal to obtain and integrate as much as the citizen input as practical into this update and to address all major planning issues. But at the time, I realized that I had the opportunity and truly the biggest opportunity I would get as a citizen to contribute to the vision of our city's future. This opportunity was open to all in the city who desired to participate. And I wasn't alone. Hundreds joined me, nearly 600 to be exact. And I'm still certain that we broke a record doing so. And not just once, but twice. I have spent the last several days reviewing those surveys. I have read every single comment that was written, all 3,914 of them, in addition to the questions that were answered. On the first survey, when asked about mixing residential and commercial, 67% were opposed and 27% were in favor. When the first survey was clear that the majority of the citizens felt that keeping South Weaver a small town was paramount, we asked on the second survey, what type of housing helped bring that to pass? 83% felt that densities low was the most important factor and coming in a close second at 72% was the type of housing we allowed. Reading nearly all 4,000 comments of both surveys, there were a few key themes that kept coming up. There was concerns about high density housing, bringing in too much commercial, traffic and protecting our small town feel. After making some revisions to the commercial zones as a council, we asked the citizens seven months later on our second survey how we did. 64% said we still have too much high density housing and 43% felt that we had too much commercial. Those responses are aligned with how the plan sits today. So there are many things that I love about our country. Uh, but when it comes to the way that we have set up our government, one of the items that I feel is most crucial is a balance of power. We see this balance of power most notably at the federal level, but we also have it in our own local municipal government. Councilwoman Petty brought up some great, some of these great points at our last meeting. Property owners have rights. They have the ability to develop their land and to request certain zoning of the city. No one likes to be told what they can do on their land. And in most cases, it's not even legal for you to do so. But here is the key where that balance of power comes in. The citizens have the right to shape the future of their city they live in through participation of the general plan. As stated above, the participation of the citizens in the general plan is integral and their feedback should be integrated as much as possible. That is written in our document. Add to the further balance, the city council, the elected officials have the ability to weigh both the rights of the property owners and the rights of the citizens and their vision and decide the best course of action. There are many times when we assist as city council members make decisions and sometimes is based solely on our own opinions and what we think is best. And that can be really hard. Uh, Councilman Haversen actually relayed that and that difficulty in our March 9th meeting. Because of the impressive general plan survey results, we have at our fingers a very large sample size of data most cities would greatly desire to have. After reviewing these comments, once again, it is very clear numerous times over what a large and diverse group of people, diverse meaning people from all over the city, want for our future city. When a vast majority has clearly stated their desires for the city, I find it irresponsible for me to ignore and move forward with my own personal opinion. As an elected official, I represent the people and I take that responsibility very seriously. The people have gone through the correct process to make sure their voice is heard and they have spoken. Therefore, in being aligned with that general plan feedback, I do not support any residential on this property to any density. Furthermore, after reviewing the public's concern of traffic and bringing in too much commercial and to, more to a point of the agenda item we just discussed, um, I feel that we need to revisit how much commercial we are allowing on these properties. Um, and if we are making it more difficult, then it needs to be both for our property owners, for our citizens and for us.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Albert. Does anyone else wanna make any comments? Because um, you've been sitting here all night and I don't wanna just shut you out. I wondered if a representative, I, I heard at the beginning of the meeting, there was someone that wanted to say something. Is that still the case or? No? Okay, all right. All right, um, then we will, as Councilwoman Haversen said, take it to committee and uh come back with any revisions to the council. All right, let's uh move to reports.
Can, can I interject?
Yes.
I, I mean, the committee would like to then have feedback because one commi, one council member just changed to zero residential. Maybe, maybe you were that way, you were leaning that way before, but it was, we were leaning toward. But is that, I know that's your stance now. I, 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 very clearly. Do we have the rest? I mean, I, the committee would, that was the request. Do we wanna, is that the direction we're headed?
Is the question zero residential? Is that what you're asking?
Well, if we're gonna go back as a committee and talk about this development agreement, yes. I, I, I get it, it's putting it out there. Someone may put it out on Facebook, what I say. I don't know who that is, but I, someone may, just saying, so.
So Blair, I'll, I'll just add my comment. I mean, originally it was try to follow the general plan and do the commercial highway. And so that, to me, was the, the goal. But then the discussion was, if that doesn't work, then what would we allow? And that's where the residential option came in. And so if we've already made the decision that commercial's not gonna work, you know, then I have, you know, an opinion on how much residential. And that's what we talked about last time was, you know, an R7 max. But the goal would still be, if possible, if it's feasible, to do what the original plan was for that area. And as we talked in our earlier discussion, if that's not gonna happen or if the developer and property owners wanna bring something else forward, then they have that right.
Okay.
Just to answer your question, I, I think we need to maximize as much as we think is reasonable, the commercial aspect of it. But given the facts that we can't make the whole thing or it may not be in the best interest of the community to have it all commercial, then some residential I'm open to, but not, not the highest necessary density or double it up to density. It needs to be, you know, what the, what the public was saying, smaller density or less density. But we need to follow our residential codes, whatever they wanna apply to those zones. Okay, thank you.
Angie, did you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I do. I take this seriously too, and I know you're not saying that personally, but I want everyone to know that I do take this seriously. This weighs on all of our minds, so um opinions are different and they may not be popular, but if we hold that entire parcel to commercial, we are doing our citizens a disservice. It will not be profitable. It will be empty. It will not be what we want. And I, and there's just no way we can, in good conscience, as council members, say hell no to residential there. We just can't.
I'm saying hell no to residential there as a master plan. If the, if the property owners wanna come and split their parcels and say, hey, these seven acres, I want residential and these three acres, I want commercial, that's a different story. But if they're gonna master plan the whole thing and add a residential component, that's what I'm saying, master plan, no residential.
I just feel like if you are a business owner and you are going to pay rent, whatever rent is going to be, I have no idea what it's going for right now. Why would you invest the same dollar down here off of the main thoroughfare as you would somewhere you can get in another city that's not in a dust bowl that has higher traffic counts? We are not gonna feel that was commercial. I just, I truly believe that. And I'm, I'm not, I'm really not trying to get fired up about it, and I am. Because if we do that, then we are all doing them a disservice. Every resident now, every resident in 20 years, every resident in 50 years.
Can I ask you why you feel it's a disservice?
Because we will not get any, it, it will not be filled. It won't be filled.
Right, so.
So if you're saying, you're basically telling the property owner, if you don't put every commercial on all of this, you're never gonna have anything happen.
What Blair was saying, the property owner has the right to come and request a rezone at any time. I'm saying if we're going to master plan this property, then it needs to be commercial or you subdivide it. And if you subdivide it and you take your seven acres and it's residential, it's R7. Those seven acres are R7. But if you're gonna master plan it, meaning that you're going to be willing to give them more density, for whatever reason, given the entire percentage of the parcel, I'm saying no. I don't agree with that. I'm not tying the, the property owner's hands. I'm not tying them at all.
Like you said.
No, no, what I'm saying is, is that if we have a master plan where we're saying, okay, you bring us so much commercial and we'll give you so much residential, I'm saying no to that. If the property owner wants to subdivide, they could've done this anytime, just as Blair said earlier. At any point in time, they can come and say, hey, you know what? We wanna do a rezone for residential or whatever. Then that's, that's a different story. And that's something that we can look into. But if we're, and I, I still, like I said earlier, and this is kind of these two agenda items kinda go hand in hand between this one and the one on the Thank You Crosshatch, is that if we're going to master plan it, we need to decide how we're going to do that. But if they want to subdivide it out, which they have the right to do, then that's a different story. If they can bring us just a, a coffee shop right now or just an ice cream store right now, that's fine with me. And if they wanna bring us just a gym in five years, that's fine with me. And if they wanna bring just a T-Mobile store or whatever in another year, then cool. And if they decide, hey, after that, we can't bring any more commercial. That is, that is the max amount of commercial we can bring. Can we rezone this to a residential component? And the acres that are left are residential? Then yes, that is something that we can work with. But to combine them and give them additional density because it's master planned is what I am against. Our residents were very clear, mixed use, meaning commercial and residential, mixed together.
But you didn't say anything about density in that statement.
I did.
Then I missed it.
Sorry.
Can I just ask a quick question? Maybe it, and the, where I was intending to go with, with this was going back to Quinn's comments a week or a month ago, where our city, our code allows if there's a parcel that's R7, your, we're, our code states that we count the entire acreage. If they sub, basically request the top six acres of this as R7, R7 applies. The bottom 4.7 whatever's left as commercial highway, that's, let's say that's their request. But I still would like to see kind of a master plan if that's the request so that we know what we have for an egress and in, all of our egress and ingress into the, I mean, I'm, does that make sense? You're still applying codes, there's a line divided, but it's still a master plan.
But in this case, we're giving them extra density.
Well, but.
Based on the entire parcel.
Only based on if what's in here right now. If we go back to what the majority of this council talked about it, and maybe this isn't acceptable to the developers, but 42 units, that's still our R7 on six acres? That's, there's a code that applies to that. There's a commercial highway zone that applies to 4.7 acres. Then it's master planned. That may not pencil or do whatever financially for them. I'm not, that's not my concern. But if that's, that's where I would, what I was gonna want to try to talk to Angie and our committee about putting and presenting to the council. And that's what I think would've been in front of you, or they would've said, no, it doesn't work. And, but I still would want that master plan so we don't build a taco time, a coffee shop, and then a bunch of houses at the other end next to a bunch of storage units down there. That'll look terrible in the city. And, and, or behind it, they build all this stuff up in front. How do they build behind it? Now they got all this unusable prop. I, I did just, it's gotta have a master plan of some kind or a development plan. It doesn't have to be done right now, but it has to have some kind of cohesiveness on a big piece of property.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but at the same time, they have the ability to subdivide this out anytime, just as we mentioned earlier. And so, and, and what we are doing here is we're saying, okay, you've master planned it. We will give you additional residential because it's being master planned based on 100% of the parcel. And I'm saying that our residents were very clear.
But.
We didn't want, we weren't going.
I just gave them an R7 on our, on six acres. I didn't give them any additional units, nothing. And that's what the three members of this council basically told us to go back with last time.
Yeah. Thank you. Let me clarify that. If we're going to ma- If we're going to master plan it, I still say, I guess I'm saying the same thing, but perhaps it's not coming through correct. If you're going to rezon your six acres of residential or whatever it may be, and they get the R7s, then that's what they get. But if they're going to master plan it and they're asking for us in exchange a higher density or density in general, I disagree. And it should not be based off of 100% part of the parcel. And for the record, in no way or form did my comment relate that nobody else cares up here.
No, I reckon.
What makes a great council is that we can disagree but respect each other. And I really do believe that. I think the best decisions are made when you have opposing views because you're able to consider the cons and the pros and everywhere in between. So none of my comment was meant to be directed personally.
All right.
It was not an agenda item for the developer.
All right. So I guess Blair's question still stands, though, what are we taking back to committee?
So it sounds like all but one are in favor of looking at some residential on that property. Is that correct?
That's why I asked the question to clarify, because Haley, you did say you don't think it can fully sustain commercial. So that would allow.
Exactly, this is why I'm saying it's picky. Crosshatching, which is why I'm in favor of subdividing it out because I do genuinely concern that if we master plan these entire 10 acres and these 18 acres of the Stevenses, we don't have the ability to sustain that much commercial. The only thing we're going to continue to get is a high rate of density that is the anchor location. And I am saying that it would be better for the landowner, the developer, and I think the citizens to subdivide it out. But these two conversations are tied to each other. So this statement was obviously written before I knew how the other conversation was going to go, so.
I want just the record to show that no one got this packet until Friday. So if there's any confusion as to us being in love with what was presented, I'm just going to make sure everyone understands that is not the case.
Okay. Blair, do we have a direction for committee?
I think so. I mean, it'll be whether the, we can put stuff on paper. It'll be whether the developer wants to proceed after that or not.
Right. Okay.
That's kind of what I thought we were going down. So that the developer didn't waste their time to give us another plan, like I asked, so.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Sotekrist. All right. The next item is reports. Do we have any new business?
Oh, I have one. The new lights that we have installed for the streetlights, they still do not have power.
Yeah, Rocky Mountain Power is extremely frustrating. Brandon, I think, has an update, we talked about that.
I'm a little nervous that we have all these lights, which is a great project, but are we going to be able to power them? Can we get an update on what's going on there?
Yes. I'm working with Rocky Mountain Power. And at the point that it needs to be escalated, I will work with the mayor to see if I can get some help. I don't think we're quite there yet, but probably within, I don't know. I've got some contracts that I looked at today, so it's definitely on the top of the list.
Who's dragging their feet? Is it Rocky Mountain Power?
Yeah.
Yes, it was. And then they got us these contracts, and now we've got to respond to that and get back to them.
Jamie, sharpen your pen, you might be writing a letter to Rocky Mountain Power.
What is the, like, from, how long, who's waited the longest? Because I'm hearing different things. Are we over a year when we've installed these lights and not connected them?
Well, the lights got installed late summer last year.
September.
We submitted the work order for power, oh, I think it was March or April of last year, so.
So can I ask?
So it was mostly Rocky Mountain Power, but now they've responded, so now we have to respond.
So can I ask you, when you mentioned it's not to the point of being escalated, what would be your point of it being escalated?
As soon as we get these contracts back to them and don't get a response.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let me know if you need me to reach out or anything, Brandon.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I have a couple of things. I want to know, so I've talked to Dave about this, and we figure around July 4th is when the governor says that he wants to send his mask up with fireworks. And we're hoping that everyone will have, everyone that wants to can have a vaccination at that point. And so we're asking if the council is okay to discontinue the online public comment after July 4th. They can either come to this building or submit email, but they won't have the option to go online. We haven't used it much anyway, but we'd kind of like to take that off the table if it's okay with this council after July 4th.
Does it cause a burden? What's the reasoning behind it, is the question?
It's another thing for staff to do, and we allow them to submit up to an hour before council. And so it's just kind of, you know, another thing, and the timeline's difficult.
Yeah, there are steps that are taken, right? Anybody that registers and says they want to provide comment through Zoom, and it hasn't been taken up a ton since we've done it, right? It hasn't been a highly used service necessarily, but we have to wait until that 5 o'clock deadline for people to register and then get notice to them. And at times, just with other schedules and preparation, that hasn't worked out very well. But we've gotten that information to everybody every time. We haven't had issue with that necessarily. It's not a large burden, and it's not a big burden, it's just a process.
I kind of feel like, you know, if somebody wants to comment, then coming down to the council chambers and making it in person is, you know, it shows that they really have a vested interest in it.
As long as you don't have more than 50 people in the room, why not? My question is, why do we have to wait till July 4th?
I think the idea was whether we're tying this to COVID and whether people are concerned about public gathering space, essentially. And if that's the justification of why we implemented the Zoom online option, then to discontinue that before everybody has the opportunity for vaccination, that's the logic.
Vaccinations, in my understanding, were made available for 16 and up, I'm going to say the end of March. Okay, don't quote me on that, but near the end of March. So what's a reasonable timeframe for everyone to, who wants them, to get them? So I'm thinking, you know, we can probably go the end of May. And at the end of May, it's like, okay, if you haven't got your shot, you can wear a mask, that's your right. But we don't have to continue to have the online use. Give them a reasonable amount of time, whatever we think that is, and let's just discontinue it. Let's go back to where we were, but give people the opportunity, want the vaccination to get. And then those who haven't, that want to make public comment, they can still come down here, but they just need to take their own precautions. I guess, maybe I'm being cold, but that's my feeling on it.
Well, that's exactly the conversation we had, was what's the reasonable timeline? And felt like schedule, and then get a second vaccination, you know, three or four weeks later, that until July was reasonable. But if the council feels like that's too long, that's the question.
If you look at the statistics, sorry, develop laser com. Look at the statistics that Davis County put out on COVID. I think they said like 80% of those in the 60 and the 70 age category have already been vaccinated. And the 55 age category was like 60 some percent. So the at-risk age groups are, the majority have already been vaccinated. So what are we really talking about is the 40 and youngers? I'm of the opinion, May 30th is far enough.
Of the opinion what?
May 30th is long enough. We don't need to go July 4th.
I'm fine with that, as long as the rest of the council is okay.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yep, me too.
Okay. Microphones. It's just, I got a good reminder tonight of our issues with them going in and out over and over. I think with the new sound system, we should have good microphones, right? Microphones that work. Maybe we need to reach out to them again and see if there's anything we can do about that.
They've been trying to catch it while it's happening, but maybe we just need them to watch a few minutes so they can see what it really is. And maybe they know, you know, if there's a certain timeframe between each, and there's some, I don't know. Then maybe they should at least just start by watching some of our videos recently again.
Right, they're on YouTube, so they could go to that footage.
Haley seems to be the worst tonight.
I know, it hates me.
I have a little button over here that. Okay, and then, when do we typically do road painting during the year? Do we have a set time that we?
Brandon?
Paint stripes.
Road striping, is there a typical time during the year that that's done?
A typical time? Like, you mean that Public Works has some kind of project that they're doing?
Yes.
Not that I can respond to.
Okay.
That would be more of a question for Mark. Is there a request?
Well, there's been many requests over the past few months, and I'm just wondering if those are getting back to Public Works or if we need to make that more of a priority. 475 East next to South Weaver Drive, I don't think it still has striping on it. The bottom of 2000 East, 2100 East next to South Weaver Drive, we had talked about doing striping there. And then we also talked about the intersection at the Frontage Road, that's 2700 East, correct? And South Weaver Drive, that's, those are the ones that I can think of.
Did you say 475?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So.
So 475 is on the list to be paved this year, so we will address the striping with that. And then we can certainly add these other areas just into our plan and get them done.
That would be great. Okay, any other new business?
Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Do we have all of our signs for the soccer complex in now? I saw we have our directions, do we have our no parking?
No, the no parking ones, again, still trying to get with UDOT to have them approve those locations that we've suggested.
Okay, so have we gotten them in stock, Ben?
Yes, we have them.
We have them, we're just trying to get approval. And it's just the no parking one, we have all the direction ones up?
All the direction ones are posted currently.
Okay, thank you.
Just the no parking ones.
Do we still need to visit the concept of putting speed humps in? That was once suggested, and are we going to get these signs?
I think Public Safety was going to take that up, we just haven't met yet.
Okay. Not speed bumps, but speed humps, like 10 feet, 12 feet.
I think there's a song for that.
There is a song about that.
Okay.
I will say in the budget, there's a, that will come forward on the 27th, but as the committees have worked on it, the flashing speed limit signs for Old Maple Farms there is part of that. But yeah, Public Safety will take that up.
Thanks, Blair.
All right. Let's move to reports. I had a meeting with Wasatch Integrated Waste, and they are still scheduled to begin construction of the final cover of the second tier in the cell of the landfill located directly adjacent to South Weaver City in July of this year. Afterward, activity at the landfill will move to the cell furthest away from South Weaver City. So that will be nice. Just to note, $65,000 has been accumulated from residents and businesses in this community to go toward the additional four pickleball courts at Canyon Meadows Park. So I want to thank everyone for their generous donations for that. I wanted to give a shout out to Haley and Angie for the Easter egg hunt week before last, or was it last week, week before last? And the youth city council, because they put a lot of time and energy into that, and they did a great job. So thank you. All right, and then just to know, all council members and their spouses will be attending the ULCT Spring Conference in St. George this next week. We look forward to bringing back a bunch of new ideas that hopefully we can implement in our city. So that's all I have. Let's go to Councilman Windsor.
I get to go first. First, can I make a recommendation as well for the May 30th, we get rid of these partitions?
Do we have to wait till then? I can't even see.
Is there a motion there? Can we move them tonight?
It's a safety thing.
Thanks, Blair, I appreciate you looking out for me.
I want them bigger.
I thought that's why YouTube.
I may be small, I am feisty.
For finance admin, on Quinn's behalf, we're going to be meeting this Friday. I haven't got the agenda by, we'll report in two weeks what we talk about. I think there's something to do about personnel, positions, stuff of that nature, new positions or something like that. So I don't have the details, so I can't really report on it, and we'll provide that later. On the municipal utilities committee side, the lights on the off-ramp, I had made a request about six, eight weeks ago, they've been out, they're still out. Is that a Rocky Mountain Power issue as well?
No, that is our own staff getting to that. So I have followed up with them within the last 24 hours on that, to make that a priority.
Can I just add, though, that at least when I talked to Mark about it, he asked me to figure out a numbering system or something because when people say the lights are out, he's not quite sure which one it is, and the only way to find that out is to come back at night and figure it out. So we're working on ways to help all of that be more efficient.
There's about four or five of them on that off-ramp, that southbound, excuse me, northbound off-ramp of 89 on South Weaver Drive. They've been out for about two months now. They were back on, but they've gone out again. There was an issue with water in the conduits and some wire, and I wonder if that's an issue. But in any case, code committee. On behalf of the code committee, we want to extend an apology to the planning commission for the way in which the information exchange transpired last Thursday. They struggled with the information we provided them, we're going to learn from that. However, we do have a half dozen documents that we are now scheduled to roll out both publicly. We're going to put a link on the city's website, as well as a copy is going to be given to the council members as well as the planning commission of the definitions, all the definition updates. There's going to be a redline version and a clean version. The Title 10, Chapter 5 code, all the uses, both permitted and conditional uses only. And this will all be accompanied with a background memo, a matrix. We're calling the land use matrix that summarizes all those land uses, both a redline and a clean version, as well as, what's the last document I'm thinking about?
The redline of both of them, the uses in the matrix.
We were going to also include the current zoning map and the projected zoning map.
And the current zoning map and the projected zoning map to go along with that. All that information is going to be vetted. We've got most of it vetted, we're going to go through it one more time next week. And then staff are going to summarize that up, and we're going to roll it out and give the council an opportunity to review all that. So it's not, all this information, once it goes through the planning commission, is all going to come forward in one, not one motion, but one night, which all these changes to the codes are going to be recommended forward. And we want to give the council as much opportunity to digest that, as well as the public, as well as the planning commission. So get into the planning commission on May 1st, we'll get them at least 13 days, not quite two weeks, to consume that with everything else that's going to be in their packet that they're going to get. So hopefully we've learned from last week's. So hopefully we've learned from last week's inter information exchange. And we're going to do, uh, improve the opportunity here and move forward. Questions of the Code Committee, I kind of, we still have a log, we're supposed to create a log, tracking log, because we've got about six different aspects that we're trying to do at one time. And we're trying to get the uses done first and then we'll go into the further depth of the code in regards to how those uses are now going to be applied in those. We have a lot of information goes into the Planning Commission. We have a lot of information coming to council. It might be advisable, and I'll put this as an advice, that if the mayor wants to follow upon it, we may want to take a opportunity to have a work session as part of the council and review it as a work session and just go, just go over it in depth, specifically just for that, answer any questions. We could do it prior to or subsequent to a planning commission and public hearing, but it might be, there's that much information that it might be helpful just to go through it rather than expect you to make a decision in one night. That'd be my recommendation.
What would be the timeline on that? Would you think?
We could probably take the May's work session, that third, third Tuesday in May would be a good opportunity. It would be post Planning Commission. Unless you've got something planned for that, that Tuesday.
Yeah, we can, we can add that to our calendar.
I think it puts the pressure on us to follow through and make sure we have everything done, so put the date down there and we'll get it done.
All right. Okay, thank you. Wayne, Councilwoman Petty.
Thank you, Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Committee met a couple of weeks ago with Hogan. We discussed our budget and options. Phasing how we want to complete this, so we will be meeting with them again tomorrow to follow up and kind of whittle down our budget and make sure we can get everything on our, on our proposed plan. And I just wanted to say, you already touched on it, but I just wanted to shout out to the kids, the, our youth city council, because they worked really hard on the Easter egg hunt. And Haley, we, it was, it was a lot of fun, so appreciate all the public that came out and supported our youth city council. That's all, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Wait, no comment about the false start?
You know what I will say about the false start? I, I, it's fine. I felt really bad. I hope the firefighters didn't feel bad. And I'm like, it's fine. Okay. No big deal. Everybody got candy, right? Mostly?
I think everyone did. You, you were prepared. You had extra there and so those that were still coming in, they were able to get some too, so. All right, thank you. Councilwoman Alberts.
I was gonna say, next year we're adding an adult Easter egg race, so if we miss the first false start, we have a second one that you can ring the bell on. I have, I have no, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Halverson.
Just information, we'll have a Hiller Force Bay Rab Restoration Advisory Board meeting on the twenty-ninth. So if there's anything you want me to ask or find out, please let me know. And then I was asked by one of my neighbors, and I don't know why, are we, garbage is still picking up tomorrow, correct? They have not sent, they've heard there were notices going out with the winds that the garbage is not being picked up?
They picked mine up today.
I thought so. I just, I didn't think, so that's.
Yeah, I have not heard anything.
Okay. All right, I will let them know. Other than that, I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Documents were signed today on closing of Public Works property. The, it's a lot of work for that one statement.
You guys did really good.
We, we have received a response from UDOT as far as the speed limit study. Just had some email exchange back and forth about that, and so I will forward that on to the council so you can see what they're saying. The, long and short of it is, they don't want to change it. They did a study very recently, actually, that verifies the current speed limit. So I'll send you that, I'll send you that information so you can read through it. I pushed back quite a bit on it. I was frustrated by the response and some of the, some of the logic and reasoning. So I'll send that to you so you can see it. Brandon brought it up a little bit, but I was going to report on the streetlight numbering, that we're in a process of numbering all of the streetlights. And so if you see on the bottom, and it's not all out yet, but some are out, on the bottoms of the poles, you will see a little white tag that SWC and then a five-digit number. And, and so it would be helpful moving forward, again, as Brandon said, when, when a street light is out, if you can refer to numbers, great. But really, the quickest way to, to deal with that is to call City Hall and get that information to Public Works or to report a problem on the city website. But I'm happy to take those and forward those on as well. And then, just a reminder that the Utah League of Cities and Towns conference is next week. And so I will be there for the UCMA conference, the, the two days leading up to that, and we'll be in St. George the whole week. And I know the council is involved in the remainder of that week for the league conference, so. That happens annually and looking forward to the training and, and information that'll come there.
Do you know if they have those classes available online as well?
I don't believe they do.
They don't? Okay, just curious. All right, thank you. Jamie, did you have anything else?
No, nothing to report. Thank you.
All right, Brandon, anything?
No.
Sherry?
Nope.
Okay, Michelle? Lisa? All right, then if that is all, I will undertake a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.